I can't find it. I can't find it.
You know who's really fascinating is my five-year-old son.
We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we mentioned on our last meeting, we had about three weeks ago, we went out to the, all the select board members and the town manager, and asked them to consider what they would, what they would consider five of the most important things that we need to improve in the town of Long Meadow. We did not put sideboards on the discussion. We left it wide open. They were, they had the freedom to come back in with anything they chose. And this is day one of a process. We're not sure how many days it's going to take us to put together a fairly comprehensive list of the cumulative thoughts of these six people. As we go through tonight, I think you'll see the depth of thought that went into some of them and some of the areas where we cross over. There's several areas where we unanimously agree there's certain things that need to be done. There's other areas where we went into our fields of expertise and pulled up items. I've got some, some bylaws or not bylaws. I've got some rules and regulations we're going to try to have for the meeting tonight. The projection, I don't know if you're at home, we're going to be able to see it, but everything that we are looking at and talking about will be on the screen behind us. And each member has been given a copy of this overview. Now, the process was to identify needs as determined by select board members and the town manager. That's the process we're going to go through. And then prioritize the ideas. Then the third part of it is brainstorm the solutions, present recommendations, and implement action plans or prepare for town meeting presentations. This does not circumvent or bypass the different goals that we had last year. We're going to bring those goals back out and incorporate them along with this process. And there's likely some duplication there, but we are hopeful that at the end of this, that we are going to determine some very positive directions for us to take, not only for this year, but hopefully we can, we can embed a living document that'll go on for many years, similar to 2004 study. You're going to hear that be brought up again in strategic planning you're going to hear. So, we're going to try to bring this together so that it transcends this board and goes to future boards. I think that would be the desire of every member on this board is to allow something to be created that will be refreshed instead of reworked as the years go by. As I say, I've got, I've got all the comments that the members have put. I've got them on a program. We, Stephen, I talked with Stephen, and Stephen said he was just as at ease. If I read his comments tonight, each select board member can read their comments, or they can have me read them. It really doesn't matter. The discussion is going to be there. Some of the ground rules, as I asked, the presenter shall present ideas for improvements and not critique on other board members or boards as executive bodies. We want to stay on a very positive side of this discussion. This is, this is not the time to, to try to tear apart an idea or frown upon an idea. So, I told everybody, we're banning any moans and groans and evil looks and all the things that sometimes can get going at other meetings in other towns. I've asked that we do not interrupt the presenter when they're, when they're making the presentation. There will be a period at the end of each presentation for an encapsulation and a questioning of more details for each proposal. Members will be allotted time for clarification proposals by the presenter, so that it's built into the process. Comments should be for clarifying understanding and not for debate. What we do not want to do, and which is the chairperson, I will prevent from happening, is to start to debate anything that's mentioned tonight. That is not the purpose of this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to get ideas out, and hopefully if we can get them out and we can start to put them in groups and possibly prioritize them. And then in the next several meetings after that, we will start to debate these because we have to brainstorm and get down to where we have an actual workable plan for implementation. Any questions from the board members? The first one was the town manager's proposal. And Stephen, do you want me to read yours?
I think it's fine to go through them. Just read the list. It'll be fast.
Okay. The, what we received, folks, is we got various pieces of paper and forms that people put in their comments. And the town manager put in, one of his items was DBW facility, and he said, "Perform additional site assessments, determine departmental space requirements and decentralization possibilities, and explore funding methods." Now, you can imagine just what I've said. There's a lot of area and ground to cover within those three very, very, very simple statements. So, that's why I say we don't want to get into debate on it, but this is, this is just what his thought was on one of his projects. And I believe, was that your top priority? Okay. So, that was his top priority. Number two was a charter review committee, and the purpose being to clarify roles and responsibilities of select board and the town manager. Second part of it was review composition, terms, and functions of appointed boards, committees, and commissions. The third one that the town manager submitted was a bylaw review. Review existing bylaws. Implement new bylaws directed towards visual quality in our community. You're going to hear visual quality or that type of standard mentioned a couple, three times now. I think there's a great deal of awareness starting to come about on visual quality in our community. High-profile properties falling into disrepair can have a disproportionately negative impact on the visual quality of our town. And I think that's self-explanatory. I think we all know what that can do from the visibility standpoint or the visual quality standpoint. The town manager's final proposal was update of the master plan. Town's master plan was last updated in 2004. He suggested that we revisit the identified needs of our community from this report and make recommendations for improvements. Identify expansion opportunities. Again, you can, when you start talking about master planning, this is a subject that we could talk for a week in this room about. This is a massive undertaking. It's not near as simplistic as these three bolded items that have been brought forward. Excuse me. I was, I was wrong. The fourth, the last one the town manager put in was the Quint truck, and it was review funding options based on previous select board ruling. I think everyone is aware that the select board ruled last year to purchase the Quint truck if we were able to get available donation dollars to offset the difference between a regular fire truck and the Quint truck apparatus in the tune of about $200,000. And this proposal, I think we're entering the window where we have to either purchase or not purchase, aren't we, Stephen? So, that, that's why this has been refreshed. We understand there is a vehicle out there, and there has been board action here just in the last couple of weeks to, to reach out for more donations. So, just to make sure this is an active element that we want to keep on the forefront. And then we have, we opened up a period now for board members. If there's any clarification for questions from the town manager, it's a, just for clarification purposes of what he's put in. Any board members have any questions? Go ahead, Alex.
Visual, could some, either you or Stephen, could you elaborate on what you mean by visual quality?
In the context of the comments that I put, visual quality is, obviously, we get complaints when, when homes are abandoned or not maintained, grass gets long, perhaps you're not, you know, paint starts peeling, things start falling off the house, or even visual quality of signage, anything. And so, basically, the aesthetics of property, of town land, if, if private property is having a blighting, it has a blighting influence. There are other communities that do address issues of blight. So, really, just it's what you see.
Any other questions? I think you're going to, I know you'll see this echoed, maybe not in the exact same words, but it'll be what they say, "The devil's in the details." So, there's a lot of times this visual quality standard is, is going to be mentioned in some of these comments.
Well, it's obviously highly subjective.
Very subjective. That's, that's correct. Yeah. And really brings fever up in a lot of people when you start talking about visual quality standards at their surrounding or at their homes. Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to Marie. Marie, would you like to go ahead and take yours?
Well, do you want to just read everyone's? How did you want to go about this?
I didn't plan on it that way, but I certainly can. Would that be your pleasure, or would you like to read yours?
Well, I guess I'll do a little bit of reading and, so, my number one thing I felt was, you wrote it down as leadership by the select board. I described it in the paragraph more of a, the board learning how to be an executive board. And you mentioned we had to do steps or recommendations, and so, the, the things that are followed are ways that we might be able to start working more cohesively as a board, such as having facilitative meeting on roles and responsibilities, maybe work in a subcommittee and what the, there should be a rulebook on select board, maybe create a bylaw allowing a suspension or recall of a select board member. The reason I had that, I had sort of considered that like the Mayor Tom Ford sort of thing. We realized when we were looking at it that there's really no way, even if there's a criminal act, that someone can be removed from the board. Maybe change the charter to have the chair's position, be allowed to be a two-year term. These were just ideas that were thrown out, but it was, it was almost like the review of the charter to see, is there something in the charter or the way that the select board is set up that makes it difficult for us to function? So, I felt that was the number one issue in town. Number two, new TPW, and you broke down my steps, is have a town manager evaluate which functions could be moved to other town properties immediately. Have town manager develop a plan for location of the new DPW complex, including a cost estimate for design and funding for such design work. Should probably come from the special town meeting warrant, because I know we've always talked about where we're going to go with the next step, and we would probably need some design money in there.
Okay.
Number three is, you said, "What are the biggest problems in town?" And I looked and I said, "Well, the budget right now is being eaten away by salaries and benefits." And as we move along, this tendency and this trend's going to continue. So, how are we going to start putting the brakes on that so we still can provide the services that the residents are expecting? One of the things we did do was decrease the cost of health insurance, for the retiree health insurance, and also we're able to hold down health insurance costs this year. And we could look as a next step, looking at the non-Medicare eligible plans and see if we can do something with those costs. Another step we could look at in trying to take care of that is advocate for pension laws, common we, and the Commonwealth in funding, maybe even asking the Commonwealth, instead of just local aid, have aid towards the payment, towards an OPEB or these pensions. Create a trust for OPEB. Right now, we do have an OPEB fund, but it's not an actual trust. And I understood when we attended the MMA meetings, if you make it an actual legal trust, you start to maybe, the unions may be able to feel more comfortable about negotiating some money being put in a trust. Just an account isn't good enough. It really, we should, the next step should be looking for a trust. Another next step might be regionalization of services. I know the town manager's been starting to move towards that, but I think that would be a great way of decreasing the stress of salaries and benefits on our budget. The other is increase outsourcing or insourcing. Outsourcing is where you take a function the town is now doing and you have a third party do it. Insourcing is, we have some really great departments, maybe other towns would want to pay us to do that function, and that would be insourcing. And it would be a source of increased funds. Ask the school committee for policy contributions on how they feel they could help decrease the salary issues and pressures on our budget. So, I had that as number three and the steps, possible steps we could take. Number four was traffic. I know that we've had a lot of problems with traffic in town. A lot of residents have been complaining about it, and we know we have to always plan five to 10 years in the future. Whether there's a casino or not, the traffic's not going to get any better. So, request the town manager, some of the next steps would be to create a comprehensive multi-year plan, advocate for regional changes in traffic patterns, which means we'd have to talk to Springfield, East Long Meadow, figure out if there's a better way for this traffic flow, especially the truck traffic that's been pouring into Long Meadow and will be increasing. Let's see, participate in the regional discussion on mitigation of traffic with the viaduct work. That's coming right up, and we really should be sitting down with the other towns deciding how this traffic is going to flow, and so it's, Long Meadow's not hit. Ask the town manager to create a regional working group with other towns in regards to traffic and form a grant committee. I know that Complete Streets is just one of the grants we can look at, and they were funded up to $50 million this year. I do have to say on that step, I heard today they might be pulling back in that funding. But if we could start looking at grants on dealing with the traffic issues. My last point was, is long-term planning. I guess the town manager mentioned the master plan, and I think that we should consider as one of the next step is hiring a planning and development assistant. There's so much to be done in town. I know other towns have hired someone to do some economic development in town, because there's lots of properties in town that could be put back in the tax rolls. And I think even though we are almost completely built out, we're not 100% built out, and just putting some of those properties on the rolls will start bringing in increased tax income. So, I think that we should seriously sit down and do some master planning, and having a assistant come in and assist the town manager on that would really show commitment to that. So, those were my five points.
Okay. We're in the clarification of questions for Marie Angelidis. If any of the board members requires any clarification on something she's wanted. Alex?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Marie, when you were talking about school committee policy contributions, could you just elaborate on that? I wasn't exactly sure what you meant.
Well, what I meant is that we should really sit down with the school committee and see what their ideas are, because just as there are, the whole town budget is slowly, having this pressure of these increased salaries, the, the school committee's facing the same issue. And maybe the school committee would have ideas on how we can either increase funding or else find a way to decrease the number of people that are doing the jobs in town, or maybe change. It was mainly sitting down and having a discussion with them and have their contributions to this, these ideas, because it's a joint problem.
And then the other question I had, because you were talking about complete streets, and I think you mentioned this at a previous meeting.
Mm-hmm.
What's the source of that grant? I know you said it was drying up, but like, what would have been the source?
Oh, no. Well, the, in the current budget, the governor has always pushed complete streets, and it's a-
So, this is state money you're talking about?
It's a state money, and it's been funded to $50 million. And my understanding, I was attending a meeting today at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and Tim Brennan said that, two weeks ago, it was discussed that they were going to pull back on that because of the other needs and the transportation costs of the regular streets, but they're thinking of still putting out some pilot project. And so, we could still make some presentations, and we might be able to become a pilot town.
Okay.
But that's just one set of money. I think also what I attended today was the community innovation challenge grants, and that also we could look to see, maybe get some money for our traffic issues.
And is that state money as well?
That's state money as well.
Okay. Mark, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I had one thing, Marie, that I was just going to mention. You talked about the recall provisions. There is, there are state recall provisions. It's just we don't have anything in our charter.
Right.
That's, that's really what it is. And there, there could be a time when it would be beneficial. I mean, you could have something horrendous happen on this board, and that's, that's the reason for it. I just want to make sure that people are aware. There is actually recall provisions if you go online and read them, but we just don't have that provision in our charter. Nothing further?
Alex?
So, the first point I described as execute improvement plan for the town manager, and this is something that we discussed during the review of the town manager. We've discussed a performance plan previously. We've discussed it at different meetings. So, that's why I use the word execute. It's, it's not so much an idea, but actually following through on it. The reason why I put it number one is that until we get this relationship on a satisfactory basis, this supervisory relationship between the select board and the town manager, you know, probably everything else, you know, is going to be difficult to accomplish. Number two, now, in the way I described it, is review the policies of the police department to fulfill our duties as police commissioners and review the police department's capacity to conduct long-term investigations to address property crimes, drug use, and drug distribution in Long Meadow. And I think it's, I think I'm the only one who put that on my list, which is probably not surprising. I'm not sure that this board has a history of being actively involved as police commissioners. And one of the concerns, and I've, I've talked about this last year, you know, if we have this statutory obligation, you know, we need to fulfill it. And, you know, the, especially the concern gets to be if we, we run into a problem down the road and our policies are found wanting, I would just, it feels like it would be a dereliction of duty to essentially have done nothing. I think on other points, you know, like the budget and other things that we discussed before this board, we give it a lot of consideration. Some people may agree, some people may disagree, but I don't think anybody can really say that we haven't addressed it. That just seems to be something that just, over the years, hasn't been addressed at all. The third point was what I call a long-term capital plan. Again, this is something that I discussed when I was running for select board. I've discussed it on this board. And I hark back to something that Barry Del Castillo talked about, was a joint capital planning committee with school committee members and finance committee members in the mold of Amherst, which, which he'd talked about. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be in that mold, but, you know, we've talked many times, and I know, Richard, you gave a great presentation about infrastructure needs. And I remember Mark mentioning that, you know, this isn't so much a discussion about infrastructure as a discussion about money, because everything that we could accomplish on the infrastructure and could be done with money. And I believe that the thing that holds us back is a bigger picture plan. You know, I hear $100 million, $200 million altogether sewer, water, schools, townside buildings, and I think we need to look at that holistically. We've got to look at it together. And whatever we're going to accomplish that involves that kind of dollar figure, we're going to have to have political consensus within town and engage the voters. And I, and I think the only way you're going to have political consensus is to, is to have a planning committee like that. My fourth point, and again, we've discussed this in the last year, what I call reviewing and improving the operations at DPW. I, I don't really put it in, under the frame of new DPW facility. I think the first question is, you know, defining the mission and in particular reviewing outsourcing. So, figure out what the mission is, figure out what we want the DPW to do, and then figure out what facility is appropriate to that. Then fifth is just kind of a general point, which is to implement town-wide procedures and standards for efficient use of town employees' time and town property. And I guess the way I think about that is just kind of a top-to-bottom improvement of operations. And to do that in a deliberate way and to give confidence to people in the community that we're operating in an efficient way, in a way that maximizes the effect of their tax dollars. Because again, I think whenever we, all these other things that we're going to be talking about, everything costs money, some of it's significant, and I don't think you're ever going to achieve a political consensus to do these big things unless people have a confidence in how we operate.
Okay. We're in clarification of questions for Alex Grant. Is any, Mark?
Yeah. Alex, I just, I just have a question about that last item, is the procedures and operational standards, and is, I guess relative to the role the select board has in, in chartering it versus overseeing it versus contributing to that, you know, some of the other things you had, I saw more of a role the select board is contributing, participating, as opposed to just saying, you know, these ought to get done. Am I reading that right or incorrectly? And, you know, because I, you know, I see this in terms of, there's a person you pay taxes to in the, at the clerk's office, to, you know, the librarians, to whatever it is if you're talking about town employees, so.
Right. I mean, I guess, you know, I, I think of it, I, I wrote it broadly, and that was deliberate, and, and so I'll be a little bit more specific to see what I mean. So, for example, last year we had an issue about somebody spotting employees going to East Long Meadow with town vehicles. You know, we have an issue about leaving the gates open at the DPW facility. You know, these are just, I guess what I think about is minding the store, you know? And I, one way that I could see us addressing an issue like this is to bring in a management consultant. And again, we've talked about management consultants before, to look at the town generally. You know, how do we keep track of hours? I have no idea, you know, as I sit here today. You know, how do we keep, how do we make sure that town property is used for the purposes it's meant to? That's what I'm getting at. I'm not necessarily saying that a management consultant's the only way you could accomplish that, but I think that's the discussion that we need to be having.
Thank you. Paul, did you have something? Marie? Anyway? Okay. Okay, thank you. Alex? Mark Cole?
Okay. My, my first item has been spoken about at least once. It's the DPW facility review. We've been talking about it for years and years and years, and we need to just move either that or stop talking about it. My approach would be to do something about it. There've been a variety of members of the board. There's been a variety of issues related to it, but the fact is that it's been broadly acknowledged that our DPW facility doesn't meet the needs of, of the town, whether it's protecting the facilities and equipment of the town that, that are used, or if it's just in terms of making sure that it's, it's the right facility to enable us to do the job best. And so, I think it needs a, we need to move on doing something, whether it's upgrading or moving, but make a decision and move forward. My second item, it was to generate new income sources for the town. I've been, and it's a broken record for me, but I think that, you know, we're a fully built-out town. We need to fully identify new income sources, and we've done a minimal job in doing that. I think we have a long list of items, and I think my generate new income sources might also include some significant expenditure reduction programs, such as, you know, going forward and actually buying the streetlights or going out or and actually doing things that cut expenses. But for the most part, I think we have a, have a list. We have not executed any of those, and so I think we need to go do that. I think that's a strategic item that needs to be addressed. My third item was, is under the category of DPW reorganization. I've put that on the list, and I use the very broadest term, DPW reorganization, because in the last eight or nine years since the town reorganized, the DPW's been getting an awful lot of flack for what they do well and what they may not do as well. My personal opinion is that we took an old organization and just loaded them up with a lot new responsibilities without thinking about how to best do it effectively and efficiently. You know, picking up all the responsibilities, the park and rec department for, for buildings and- You know, picking up all the responsibilities, the Park and Rec Department for buildings and grounds, the Park and Rec Department, picking up all the responsibilities for School Department grounds and School Department buildings. You know, moving in a lower, lower-level supervisors to deal with that really has created a mega department that I don't think is currently designed in the best way possible. Certainly may not be designed in the best way possible. And I think a look at the reorganization of the DPW is in order. I understand that we, at one point, we asked for a funds to bring in a consultant to review the DPW's structure and workload. I think it can be done potentially without a outside consultants telling us how to, you know, borrowing our watch and telling us what time it is, as I often say. And so I think that that's an awfully important area for us to do, because the demands on that department are just growing, and they're not being staffed any differently. And we're still asking them to do things differently, even as we speak, down a person from due to her recent retirement. And my fourth item is to develop the water tower property. This goes part and parcel with increased revenue, but I think there are properties in town that, you know, we've been sitting on. I think it should be clear to everybody that the town's made a firm commitment that it is highly unlikely that we're going to be building another school in this town as we cut back on school sizes and look at the demographics. To sit on that potentially developable land, income-producing land, and not do anything about it, I think is a real shame. There's no conclusions on how to develop it, whether it's commercial, residential, or anything else, but I think that we need to turn the available, and have a plan to turn available land into income-producing land. And I think that's a good one. And finally, reduce costs. They put down purchased streetlights. It's on the list, I think it ought to be a priority, and we get it done in the fiscal year 2015. We didn't do it in fiscal year 2012, 13, 14, and now it's fiscal year 2015, and we need to go forward in doing it. It, you know, at a minimum, it's worth $475,000 a year to us. At a maximum, it's worth probably twice that in terms of the rental cost, the electrical cost to run the streetlights, you know, and it just seems to me that that is something that we can embrace to move forward with, both through policy systems that the board takes part in, and programming and moving forward that our Town Manager and employee staff would move forward with. So, those are my five items. DPW facility improvement, generating new income, DPW reorganization, developing the water tower property and reducing costs by doing things like purchasing streetlights.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, clarifications? Go ahead, Alex.
Mark, just on the last point about the streetlights. I know we've talked about it in the last year-plus. I don't think we've ever had anything brought to, like, I've never felt like there's been a decision point. Am I, am I wrong on that? Have we ever been asked to do anything on that, one way or the other? I mean, I know we had, we asked for the, there was the decision on the grant money, sort of toward that ultimate end, but that wasn't actually by the streetlights.
Right now, and Stephen, you can probably speak better to this, we've got a gentleman who's, I guess, the, what I'll call the New England, if not the East Coast, expert on municipal streetlight purchases, a guy named George Woodbury, who's, as you, just by the title I gave him, spread awfully thin with a lot of municipalities, looking at, you know, what's the value of our streetlights. But the intent was to come to a point where, it did come before the board, and I think that's what I'm asking, that we make sure that that happened, and that the board take it on as a plan that they want to move forward with, whether, you know, I'm not going to get into details here, but the details quickly, very clearly are, what are we willing to pay versus what is WMECO asking us to pay? And I think the complicating factor was our October 2011 storm, when WMECO came in here, did some work, and now they're saying, well, gee, you've got a bazillion dollars' worth of new streetlights, and so now your costs just escalated. And the question is, did they really, you know, did they really not? And that's where we need somebody to go forward looking at it. You know, my intent by putting this down, though, was, we've got a very, very large funnel or hourglass, and the neck of this is a guy named George Woodbury. And, you know, we're in line with a whole bunch of other communities, and I got to believe there's other ways of breaking through that than one consultant. And that would be my hope, Alex.
So, just, so I have two other questions related to that. So, first one is, sort of what's held us, because I can't remember how many years you were talking about. I mean, several, sort of, so I'll ask both questions together. So what's held us up to this point? And then, second, sort of what procedurally would be happening? Like, what kind of decision would you foresee the Select Board making? And I believe the discussion we had was the town meeting was going to be making some sort of decision. So, like, what would those decisions generally look like?
Richard, if I'm, if this is getting too much into the details, let me know. But the, the last time this came up in earnest was four years ago, and we actually started the negotiations with WMECO over price, and we were off by a factor of two. And to me, the answer to your first question is, what needs to take place is, if you're going to buy something and somebody's going to sell something, you need to come up with a price. That you, you know, the buyer's willing to buy it, and the seller's willing to sell it. The problem is, when you're A, separated by a lot, and B, dealing with a public utility, there are other complicating factors, like the Department of Public Utilities can get involved and decide what the actual value is of these, and we've never moved that route. And so one of the things the Select Board might do, and had we done this, you know, if I had seen where we would be now, four years ago, we probably would have said, let's go to the DPUC and get them to rule on what the value is, and by now, we would have had that. But we were told, oh, it's a multi-year process, and it's going to take the DPUC. Well, the Select Board can say, let's move to the DPUC and get this thing moving down the road. That's one thing the Select Board could do. The other thing the Select Board could do is literally say, you know, let's not wait on George Woodbury. Yeah, he's the guy, but, you know, is there a good second-place guy who can move us along? Because he clearly is a funnel, in my perception, maybe.
I could report on it, if you wanted me to, or we could, it's fine.
At some point, we'll do it. But, and I'm trying, not trying to get into this at this point, other than saying, saying, you know, I think that we've, and the reason it's on my top-five list is because I went back and said, what was on the list four or five years ago that's still on the list? And anything that's been on the list for four or five years, you either move on it or you take it off the list, you don't keep it on the list for five years, as one of the top priorities of the Select Board. DPW's been on the priority list for five years. Developing the land under the water tower's been on the list for five years. Purchasing a streetlight's been on the list for five years. You know, it's, you know, the old expression, fisher cut bait. Let's either move on it or stop talking about it.
So, what kind of decision would be made by the town meeting?
Can I answer that? It would be a funding decision. The grant isn't going to cover the cost to purchase the streetlights entirely. And Mark's second question about, someone wants to sell you something, what are they worth? That is actually the bottleneck right now on WMECO's end, not surprisingly. We requested detailed summary information from them, and I don't know if it's due to summer vacations or what, but they just, I finally heard from them, they were going to be giving me the information. We don't control them, unfortunately, or their generation of information.
And remember, $475,000 a year, every month they don't get it to us.
I don't know if that was, right.
Is an extra $30,000 income for them, so.
I don't know what the numbers are going to end up being, Mark, but I do, but I know George Woodbury is the man to figure that out, and I do think that they will be more than what we have. And so, Alex, to answer your question, it would just be an appropriation or a debt issuance to purchase the lights.
But, but again, you know, Alex, I don't want to play down the part that you don't have to pay what they offer. There is an appeal process, if you think differently, and that's the Public Utilities Commission. And that's where the Select Board, I think, can authorize us to go forward with that. It's not a significant out-of-pocket cost that we'd have to go to town meeting, at least it never was at one point. It's kind of directing our town attorneys to move forward with that, or however it would go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, one comment that Mark made, that he's right sometimes, you know, fisher cut bait or whatever, but the DPW complex is not something that we can either do or not do. It's, something has to be done with our DPW complex. The complex is outdated, it needs total renovation from health and safety aspects. Folks, there's, we have trucks that we cannot even get inside of the structure to repair them in the winter. The mechanics are literally having to lay on the ground and slush and all to do underneath repairs, because the trucks are so large. The structure is just outdated, it's lived its useful life. But there are a lot of options, and I agree with you, that issue needs to be resolved. It has been kicked around too long.
Okay. Mr. Santinello.
Thank you. We asked for five, and I sent them six, as long as round, I think I could have listed 20 or 30. But they're not in order of rank, except for one that I will cover. The first one I had was town performance management. We talked about a performance improvement plan, I think Alex mentioned the importance of it, so I won't go over it more than that, and I think it's something that we should follow up on. It's something we decided as a board to follow up on, and I think it's something that will help us as we go through the year. The next one was a departmental presentation to the Select Board by department heads. Earlier, when I got on the board, we had workflows presented to the Select Board. We met with department heads on a regular basis to talk about what was going on. I put down review of workflow and SWOT analysis, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis of each department. The only time that we really see things, other than having this type of presentation to the board, is being told that we need. We very rarely hear items that say, and this is over the years of, you know, it always reminds me of when you're talking operational departments, of generals that always fight the last war. And the SWOT analysis is something that organizations do all the time. But, you know, the review of the workflow, and I'll give you a good example, is that one time I was driving through town and saw three workers watching literally cement dry, with two DPW trucks there, and I called the Town Manager, and I said, I understand that it's not what it appears to be. And I said, but understand that, you know, there's other trucks and so forth, though, down there. But that would have been part of the workflow, review of cement that was being laid. They had a seasonal worker with a DPW worker with a supervisor at the end of the day checking it. And when you have that kind of information, it takes away a lot of questions that you see throughout the day as you go on, or throughout the weeks and months, as you're sitting on the board. But to hear what departments are facing, and seeing what departments are facing, as opposed to just saying, this is what we need. And like I said, we don't hear about the things that we don't need any longer, and it always is an add-on. And like I said, it reminds me of that we're fighting the last war. I'm going to skip the next one and go back to that a little bit later, if you don't mind. The next one that is on the list is the Blend Tennis Court Project in Review. I suggested that we place additional emphasis. The 2004 long-term, long-range plan has been mentioned a couple of times. Richard and I presented what I would call the vision study, and I would, my, one of my top goals would be to see us hold off on doing those courts and review what we're putting there. Twelve years ago, the Park and Rec Department came to the Appropriations Committee and said, if we redo these courts every few years, we'll never have to replace them. And I think before we go spending money, we should determine is, that's where we want the courts? What kind of courts do we want? Where, how do we want these courts to be used by residents of the town? Are they being used by residents of the town? Do we have a lot of out-of-town population doing it? How are we controlling that and so forth? We have no system, we're building courts, for example, we have no system to monitor and how they're being used. But also to take a look at those two studies, or the long-range study is something that's been there for, since 2004, and I think it's invaluable, and we should be looking at that. And also in there was evaluate potential increased tax revenues and better delivery of services to residents prior to having the opportunity to disappear for the next 15 years, and I think that's relating to the Blend Tennis Courts. Next, have implemented Charter Review Commission, not a committee, a full-blown commission, to determine what form of government is best for the town of Long Meadow. We've had discussions about it, we've had votes on it. But a Charter Review Commission will actually be able to make independent decisions as opposed to a committee that reports at a Select Board, for example. And analyze the benefits of having a major form of government. We've heard multiple times this year of disputes about who's overseeing what and so forth. And when you have a major form of government, you have someone who's directly reportable and accountable to residents. I want to go back to my previous one, which is manage the tax rate. When we talk about managing the tax rate, we've had, we have all the discussions about all the projects in the world, whether it's DPW, infrastructure, and so forth. But if we don't have a plan to pay for them, and how we're going to manage that tax rate, while you're trying to minimize the impact to town residents, then it doesn't matter what we're going to be looking at, and we're not doing what's best for the taxpayer. And a great example of that is this year during the budget, we had the opportunity of not taxing a lot, or going to the full levy limit, and at the, in the 11th hour, we spent that money. And, you know, our Board of Assessors come in, we have multiple discussions with them about the tax rate and why that they're offering single tax rate versus split and so forth. But if you manage the tax rate, then everything else falls into place, meaning it gives you your allotment of money to spend. And we've had discussions of how much capital's being, how much money's being spent on capital in its entirety and so forth. But if you manage to the tax rate and deliver the services to the residents and say, here's what it's going to look like for the next five, 10, 15 years in general, I think you have a better way of operating the government. And it goes to, I think it was said earlier about, you know, the budget, how it's expanding. Well, the tax rate is the budget. So if you manage to the tax rate, you don't, the rest of the departmental budgets can fall into place with that. But those are my five. And the sixth one, I can talk about some other points.
Yeah, I just put the fire down, Paul. No, the reason I didn't put the six down is it's mentioned in the other ones, isn't it?
Yeah, oh, no, I'm sure there's a lot of recurrence.
Yeah. Okay, there's clarification of questions for Paul? Go ahead, Mary.
When you say manage the tax rate, do you mean, like you said, don't go to the full levy? So instead of going up two and a half percent, you just would go zero, there'd be no increase?
No, I think managing, it's not, managing the tax rate is the rate that you're going to charge every homeowner on their piece of property. Saying that you're going to go up two and a half percent is not managing the tax rate, you're managing the budget. Managing the tax rate is setting a dollar amount of where you want to see this, of where you want to see it going. Once you manage the tax rate, the budget has to fall into place. Whatever you say that, so there's a difference in how you, it's really a difference in budget. And managing the tax rate says our tax rate is next, we want it to be in the next five fiscal years, not to exceed Y or three, or whatever target we're going for. And then the budget falls into place. We, most towns do it opposite. We say, here's the money from the state, here's where we can go up two and a half percent, here's the growth and so forth, and we say, okay, this is, and then we say we want to go up two and a half percent or three. You know, typically, that's what we do, or we want to cut. But managing the tax rate is setting a budget forward, and then operating backwards from it to say, how much do we have for capital, how much do we have for employees, and things like that? And it, if you can agree on that number, then the rest of it fills in. Now your dispute is over, who gets what part of the tax rate? As opposed to what part of the 3%, 5% increase that we're going to have because of, you know, what do you call it, our local revenues went up more than what we anticipated, for example. So managing the tax rate is setting it forward, and it's not just for the year, we'd obviously be looking multi-years, and then, like I said, going backwards. That's what I meant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? Yeah, go ahead.
What was your sixth? Or is that classified?
No, I actually, I'd have to check my email.
I would too, I can't remember what it was, but I know it had been repeated. You want to check, Paul?
Yeah. All I know is I was, my discussion points were cut off by Richard.
Actually, I did call him and say, you're supposed to put five in, and he laughed, so.
Great to you. Oh, here's number six, that's actually, that's not budgetary. It's review all emergency disaster scenarios and how prepared we are, and prioritize those that we can address ourselves. Meaning, we've been lucky, you know, other than the October storm, I think we've been really lucky. We have 91 going through railroad tracks, the whole thing, flights going over the town, so that was what number six was pertaining to.
And the reason I didn't jump it in is because I already had it in my presentation. So I felt that was safe to let that one slip. So noted, next time I'll put six in for Paul, too. So noted, next time I'll put six in for Paul too. Okay, no more questions? Okay, we'll move on to mine. I originally had about 12 slides, and I was reminded by my wonderful wife that maybe it didn't look good that I had that many slides, so I stripped a lot of them out and tried to condense down. I think it's been mentioned on the board, and for those of you that are watching it at home and have listened to the subjects that have already been put out, the immense nature of this exercise, it's almost overwhelming for anybody to try to take and digest and produce something of quality. It's a staggering amount of details. My first one was strategic planning. And I had on this clip, I said, "What are the needs in all major resource groups for the next 20 years, and what is our financing strategy?" That alone is an enormous statement, and we're looking 20 years. You often hear people talking five-years planning. Five-year planning, in my book, is an implementation plan. You need to have a 20-year lookout to see when the major projects are coming so you can get your tax rate in line. You can do all the planning to get ready for the big bubbles that come and go within the management of a town. And it said, "What are we doing to increase revenues and decrease expenditures?" You've heard that echoed by every person on this board. That's in the strategic planning. That's the umbrella. Strategic planning is an umbrella that would likely take about 70 to 80% of what we talked about tonight and put it under one place. What are our, what are our backup plans for the unexpected? Paul just mentioned the unexpected. Well, let me follow up and say, what's our backup for our water system? We had a slight scare this past week. 60-inch main, I believe, in Springfield was shut down while they had another line down for maintenance. The primary concern, the first emergency concern was fire protection for not only residential, but for commercial and nursing homes and et cetera. The pressures went down and they didn't have booster pumps to bring it back up. The other one, what is our backup for sewage systems? At this point, we do not have, that I'm aware of, a plan for a backup if the, if our one line crossing the Connecticut River suddenly burst, other than we're going to spill sewage into the river until it's fixed, and that would be, I'm sure, weeks and weeks and weeks to get that fixed. I understand we do have a slight backup line. Stephen, I don't have the details. We have a cross-connection, I guess, with the town of Enfield on some capacity for water in case of emergency?
We could get water from Connecticut.
Yeah. Is there enough to sustain?
I don't think it's like a flip-to-switch thing, but it's not like a month either.
Okay. But we do not have any cooperative agreements or any cross-connections for sewage that I'm aware of in our community. We're still gravity feed and siphon feed to one line leaving here and going across Connecticut River. So that, that's a, and what we're saying is this is part of strategic planning. We're not even saying it's ever going to take place, but what if it happens tomorrow? Have we thought through the process? Can we mobilize within a very short period of time the amount of tankers that would be required to carry sewage from our community to the plant? You may even be getting into the, into the armed forces to get their tankers. I mean, there's, we haven't, I haven't seen plans that we've thought through. How are demographics? What's our demographics doing in our town? Are they changing? Is it going to influence the future decisions that we're making on our facilities such as tennis courts and whatever, Paul, the schools and all that? These are some of the parts I didn't put on the slide, but I had on the written thing. And many, many things. Paul mentioned the horrific accidents, and it is a point. And I understand our chief of police, and there's no doubt about it, our chief of police has contingency plans for almost any emergency that would occur. The point that is asked, are all the departments at the same page of delivering? And folks, you have to understand, this may be already taking place behind the scenes, and that's the policy or the problem with this is we're bringing up points and the answers may come forth and put it as ease that all these plans are in place. But we are in flight line to the airport. We could have a, an airplane go down in our community. We could have a fuel tanker explode. We could have hazardous waste being put on the railroad passing by us at night. So there's, these emergencies are there. If you watch the news, they do occur across the United States. My second point was one that I've talked with Marie quite a bit and with other people that would sit for a moment and listen. It was legislative outreach, grant specialist, funding sources, and deputy town manager. I sense that we have not missed the boat, but we certainly haven't grabbed our share of the money that's, that's coming down and being spread across communities in this part of the state. And the reason being is I think it's, it's hit and miss. Now, we have certain departments. Our chief, our fire chief does an excellent job on grants. He gets grants. I think the schools get a lot of grants. I think Mike gets some grants. The problem is we don't have a grant specialist. We don't have anybody in this town that can tell us how many millions of dollars worth of grants are available and what we may be eligible for. And the reason we don't is because everybody is doggone busy doing what their primary parts of their job are. Grant writing and all starts to get off to the side. And it's the same with legislative outreach. I think I talked with Marie quite a bit a couple of years ago. We're getting ready for senatorial change, and we should be on the doorstep of the new senator and bring them to our community and do dog and pony shows and show them our deficiencies and show them cost estimates and keep showing and keep showing and keep showing until we get such influence that we can start to get money coming in. The money is being split up in Boston, folks. And if you don't have your hand in the air with a proposal and if you're not meeting the legislative requirements, the money bypasses you. It does go to the squeaky wheels, there's no doubt about it. So we're talking about outreach activities with state officials, regional officials for scouring for funds. I got on here to establish a deputy town manager for operations and restructure the duties of our town manager. I've talked to Stephen several times on that. I don't think, it's very difficult for one person to fill the shoes of a town manager with all of the needs that the town manager has during the day period. There's administrative needs, there are operational needs, there are the legislative needs, there's needs of putting up with the select board. I mean, it's just a wide palette of needs, and I'm content in my belief that there's too many things to have one person do all of these to the satisfaction of what this board really would desire. And I've proposed for the last couple of years, the last three years, I think, that we look at a deputy town manager, somebody that could take over operations. And by the way, that's not a simple task. That's a major piece of the puzzle. That way, it relieves the town manager to shift gears and get into fundraising, get into grants, get into legislative, get into these type of fields. Now, you could also bring the opposite, if you, it's not saying, you could bring a person in that goes into the legislative facts and all these other factors too. But you base, you base on what's the strengths of the staff that you have, and you staff to help those strengths get even stronger. So that's a point I'd like to bring on. I think that we need to do a lot more in the western part of Mass for legislative outreach. You've heard it mentioned before, property, property owner zoning protection. Stephen, I think, mentioned a blight. It may have been mentioned by a couple others. We need greater emphasis placed on visual quality standards, not only in our residential housing, but also in our routine town operations. Stephen, and I think everybody that's watched me for the last two or three years while I'm capital planning and while on the board, is I like to go out and take pictures of maintenance things that aren't quite right. I really get upset when I see bent-over signs and crooked signs and dirty signs and signs that you no longer read, and the list goes on and on and on. That's what I see when I look at the landscape. I see deficiencies that need to be taken care of and, because that's where my background is from. And I look at visual quality standards in our community. I see slight changes taking place. We have, we have a bylaw that says you cannot park your vehicle on the street at night, but we don't have anything that says you can't have a rotten garage door on your house. I state that there's a problem there. I think it was mentioned by Stephen that the visual quality can degrade a community very quickly, and it's a subtle change and it just keep amplifying until it becomes a major problem. I remember the town manager generally, we asked him what he thought about bad roads, and he said it was like missing teeth. Well, I see the same thing when I see paint blistering off a building. It's like missing teeth. There's something wrong with that. That's not, that's not the visual quality. We pride ourselves on the green and all, and we should pride ourselves on every street in our entire community. And I'd like to see reinforcement on that. Marie had mentioned last year about the registering and inspection of rental homes. It's another thing, the rental, or the inspections and the, and the setup on all of our foreclosed properties in town. We do have some properties in town. And you'll see them every once in a while when the zoning officer gets involved and actually gets with the lending institution, and they have to come in and clean them up. We just need reinforcement to help our people do their jobs better. Operational standards. How do we gauge, how do we gauge what we are doing now as being the most efficient and effective way of doing business? The only way you can do it is if you have a standard that you're working towards, not so much above or below, but working towards a standard. That's what you would like to see when everything is ideally being maintained. Do we have operational activities where we could achieve greater efficiencies by outsourcing? You've heard the word outsourcing. Outsourcing and insourcing, there's two very, very unique terms that can be used in labor forces. Do we have duties that we could be much more competitive with by outsourcing? I would say there is at least something in our town, other than what? We do custodial services now, Stephen? We do custodial?
For town buildings, schools still have in-house custodial staff.
Okay, so town buildings, and you heard what he said, so I don't need to repeat it, but we mow a lot of grass in town, and yet we have likely 60, 70 professional landscape firms floating through our town every day with equipment that could do the same work we're doing. And what I say is, we need to look at these. Can we be more competitive? And the money, you're not getting rid of the people. You're very slowly changing your workforce through attrition. There are other side benefits, which I think was mentioned by Marie, and somewhere, you know, it's nestled in one of my upcoming things, this is OPEB liability, which is a whole discussion within its own right. But these pieces all fit. They're all intermixed, and we're trying to get them to fit together. My next one is OPEB liability. This is, you've heard it. I'm sure you've heard it. It's other post-employment benefits. These are the costs that our retired employees place against our budget for insurances, et cetera, for the rest of their natural lives if they're so covered under. We understand that there may be difficulties by legislation in our state for changing some of the ways that we do hiring practice, but that there are a lot of ways to reduce your OPEB liability and your long-range liability. One of them is outsourcing. We do not pay contractors retirement benefits, and yet they do the work that we need done at that time period of our need. You may need to have legislative changes take place on how we hire people. You can't help but read the papers on the way corporations restructure all the time and go to temporary workforces and this, that, and the other. As I said, I mentioned to Stephen, the state governments and the county government that I last worked in was doing it. They actually privatized their retirement system, and they gave the employees 7% of salary increase and said, "From now on out, you are, you are responsible for your own retirement." This is happening all across the country because this is a major liability that's creeping up on every community in America. You're going to hear a lot more about it as the baby boomers fully settle into retirement. It's going to really flush out how serious this is. And this also brings to discussions for outsourcing and all those variety of things. There should be a beneficial review. I mean, we know it's out there now. There's proof, and we do a study, what, every two years for the outsources, or the OPEB study? To show us what our liability is?
I don't know. I think they renew it annually at some level, and then they may do it in a greater depth.
Yeah, and I think last, last one was, what, 30-some mil? Looked like our liability was?
It went down, actually, the last time we looked at it.
Good. Okay, that was my five items. Anybody, would anybody like any clarification? No clarification? Okay. We're doing fantastic. I guess that's the fan running now?
Yeah.
Either that or a terrible rainstorm.
No, it's a fan. Must be.
By the way, folks, we don't have air conditioning here tonight. There's, it's getting a little sticky in here. We've covered 30 items, approximately 30 different items brought on by the select board members and the town manager. And this listing shows basically what those topics were. What we have to do now is we have to start to condense this list. We certainly can't deal with 30 items in the raw nature. We could, but it'd be monumental task of trying to prioritize all these. Now, I took a stab at grouping these. And what we're going to do now is we're going to move into that phase, and I guess I'll pass out the document that I had. And by no, by all means, I did not try to circumvent the board. I was trying to just put them in an order which I thought started to put these together where they fit. And I think if we start to look at the document, you'll get an idea of what I was doing. And that is our point of reference right now, is that we need to somehow take this list of 30. We've got a lot of duplications, and reduce it on down to something that's manageable, and then after that, we'll start to prioritize the list, and then we'll start to actually dissect it. Now, I have another slide that I'll bring up for the people at home here. See if I get the right one up here. Okay, this, this was a consolidation list. Now, mind you, I gave, I just gave out a list of 30-some items. This was my first blush at a consolidation. And I'll read down really quick. I said, and you can see them on the bulletin board behind me. We had, number one is DPW complex and reorganization. That, that takes together the comments by likely four different members of this, of this team and puts them under just one heading. So there's nothing that's been lost traction. It's all in there. It's just that we surfaced them into one item. The number two, there was, there was considerable concern about the Charter Review Committee/Commission. So that's another major item. The number three was a bylaw review, property owner zoning protection. You heard a lot of people talk about that, so we figured that could be another logical item of importance. Strategic planning gets enormous. In my document, I had strategic planning, said, "Upgrade master plan, develop water tower property, blend tennis courts, traffic, planning and development assistant, training and development assistant slash deputy town manager, quint truck." These are all items which tend to fall under strategic planning or could be grouped there for the convenience of prioritization as we move forward. The next one I had, long-range, turn, uh, long-range, excuse me, long-term capital planning, developmental select board briefings, operational standards, town-wide procedures and operational standards, review policies of the police department. I tried to group things that were logically together, which were informational or standard development. The sixth item I had was leadership by the select board and then slash town manager performance, that those two items should be married, they have to be married together. Seven is, seven is what I changed from what I originally gave you guys in the printout. I later went back and said, "Well, let me pull a lot of the revenue-type ideas or items that were in strategic planning and put them under their own." And I, and I put generate new income, legislative outreach, grant special funding sources, manage tax rate, budgetary stress, and OPEB liability. So I tried to group a lot of financial things together to keep them out of the strategic planning, to get them centered down. So at this point, we need to concentrate or take a look at this list and, and open up a discussion for how we can group these projects together so we can then move on to prioritizing on what we think is the most important from one till seven, one till 10, whatever it may be. But before we can do that, we've got to put this list together. So I, I'm going to open up the floor for any suggestions on this. I have, I've given everybody the whole list of the 30, and you have the list in front of you of the seven that I grouped, so welcome comments. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, a couple of years, I just pulled up on my computer what we did. A couple of years ago, we had different types of groupings, and we broke them down finally to the three areas of financial, operational, and policy. And I'm just wondering if, and then if you look at them, under financial, there's OPEB. Under financial, under, under operational, there's, you know, land use or the water, you know, every one of the ones we've got would fall. In fact, my point is that several of them already are under, under these. And I'm just wondering, you know, why you chose the, these different groupings you did, Richard, instead of, you know, financial, operational, policy? And I'll tell you that when we did it under those three, the intent was that there were different, different groups of individuals who could more naturally advance things under these categories. For example, policy was clearly, the select board financially was clearly our director of finance and CEO, whereas operational was then the rest of the town managers, departmental folks, and tried to move forward with those. You know, I'm not opposed to the grouping you have, it's just that this other grouping seemed to me to make more sense.
Okay, well, let me, let me answer what he said first. I'll give you my logic, and I'm not, and it's not, it's not any more than just why I did it. I looked, and we had 30 different items, and I thought if I tried to narrow the groups items. And I thought if I tried to narrow the groups too severely, we may have a problem on actually prioritization. That's what I tried to do, is leave enough of them out there so that we could say, okay, we unanimously agree that's number one, and maybe number two. I agree with what you say, Mark. These could be condensed down to three, but then we'd have three priorities. And I just, I wonder if we wouldn't get stuff starting to slip. There would be three monsters.
Yeah, I don't think I was clear, because the programs weren't, the priority wasn't financial, operational, policy. There were actually, one, two, three, there were six or seven under each category. The intent was, we were going to pick, and we did, pick two or three from each category. So we ended up with six or seven or eight. But we tried not to end up with all of them under financial, because it would have overwhelmed one organization and not sufficiently utilized the resources of the others. So, you know, I was just trying to break it. That's all. I hear what you said, though.
Stephen, a dance.
Yeah, to your point, Mark, I think there are certain things that break down on clean lines like that, like implement GFOA budget best practices. That's clearly the finance department's going to do that. You know, if there's a specific DPW operational thing, that's an operational thing. But I think when you get to the bigger goals we're talking about, and I'm always speaking from my own ability to organize, resources, plan for implementation, do all that other stuff, each of these has significant components of financial, operational, and policy. And so I think when you kind of split them out on those terms, and I know that there was no mutual exclusivity to that, the way you had it there, but to some extent, it kind of feels that way when it falls into those three categories. I actually, this is the first I've seen this, I kind of like the way Richard has consolidated and bunched some of these together thematically, if you will, versus on the grounds that you did. I feel like, from my own mindset, how I approach problem-solving, finding linkages between some of these specific issues is good. And then, each issue then, Mark, I think, once we get further down the road, like this show, streetlights, when we get further down the road, the clearly financial, clearly operation, clearly policy tasks are going to fall out, or become, I shouldn't say fall out, are going to materialize and become self-evident. So I think these things will ultimately end up on a grouping like that. But I like the way it is written here.
Yes, Paul. Excuse me, Marie? She was, Marie, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I like the way you did it with the seven items, because I see the process where you listened to everyone's comments, and you brought it in, and you brought it in. So this is like an inclusive list that is clearly derived from everything that we've brought to you. So I'm satisfied with the grouping.
Okay. Paul?
I just want to elaborate on what Mark had mentioned. The reason why there were three classifications is that what the board had talked about at that point in time was the goal of a balanced budget is a given during the fiscal year. Or it's not given, it's a mandatory to have a balanced budget going to town meeting. Plow on the streets when it snows is a given during the budget year. So, when you had those three items, those were three items that were out of the norm of business. And there were three items that were basically saying, here's a target, let's try to achieve those two or three items that the board selected out of the, whatever number of ones that were on the particular list. It doesn't, it's a little bit different format than what was here, but what the reason why those three categories were put up were, those were in addition to the day-to-days.
Right.
Okay. Your list is included in some of the day-to-days. So it's kind of apples and oranges, but that particular list that we developed a few years ago was really meant to say, here's what we do day-to-day, we already know that part of it, we want to do X, Y, and Z above and beyond that. I guess my concern is having thirty different items and trying to whittle them down into, you know, six or seven categories. And then, I guess my concern is, whatever this compendium ends up looking like with these seven categories, and how intensive it is, is what's the benchmarks to them, when do they get achieved and so forth? So, you know, I mentioned a while back that we should have had some sort of goal set, and I would assume this is, in my opinion, in lieu of that, which is actually, it's going to accomplish the same, similar outcome, I think. But more so than this, I think part of what we need to do is, what type of benchmarks do we want to appoint to all of these? And first of all, do we agree with them, right? And what's the benchmarks? And then, you know, what are expectations with those benchmarks? So that, six months from now, we're not looking at the seven categories and saying, yeah, we agree on all seven of those, you know, and we're just six months older, you know, so.
I would not undermine what you're saying. The task before us is enormous. I mean, there's no doubt about it. It's almost mind-boggling to try to take on this much. But, you know, you take thirty different viewpoints coming in from six individuals, which I thought was interesting, that we seen so many similarities show up in the evaluation. And this, the only thing I tried to do is take, what I looked at, that big list, and just get them into this list and try to break them down to say, it seemed to be that one could be DPW complex and reorganization. So that's a fairly large undertaking. And that was all I was trying to do, is just start the preliminary groupings. Maybe not even get to the detail that you're talking about, Mark, maybe not to that level, that may be a subset of this. And I'm not married to any process going forward. I mean, as far as the process, I'm committed to the end result, but not the way that we get there. And I think it's important that we move in that direction, that, I mean, we've got some fantastic things on this piece of paper, there's no doubt about it. And I think everybody in this room realizes that we need to work on them.
So what do you vision our next step be, to vote on the top three, or to actually have a next step on each of the seven?
No. What I would envision, what we're doing right now, is we are trying to figure out, how do we group these into legitimate work elements or work grouping, so that we can set priorities?
The seven or the thirty?
The thirty. The thirty has been down to seven major topic areas. And then what we're going to do, it's like, if we went with this list right now, we would get into where we're going to start to prioritize these.
Okay.
And Mark and I chatted today on the process of prioritization. There's several of them out there, and Mark's got a pretty good process that works pretty well for him that I've never used. I've used one, but it's, mine's a little bit longer and has more checkmarks to it. So that's what we would be doing. That would be our next logical step, because we took all of these thirty, and we've listened to them tonight, and we've consolidated. We have not thrown a single thing out. Everything has been consolidated, hopefully, in this list of seven. Or that it's embedded in there, the meaning of it is there. This is not the process to throw anything out. That'll come later down the road, when we actually start to get in and tear apart these items to see how they feasible. Because there's items in here that we may find out have already been done, and we're just unaware of it. And then they go by the wayside. There may be some items that we don't have the power to do. We don't know at this point. So that's yet to be determined. So, yes, Mark?
I guess I'm still not clear that there are few of these categories that contain multiple sub-items that are diverse, I won't say mutually exclusive, but clearly accomplishing one doesn't necessarily accomplish the other. And, you know, if you look at something like item seven, generate new income, legislative outreach, grants, special funding sources, manage tax rate, budgetary stress, and OPEB liability. But, you know, the skills and activities that work on legislative outreach are different from the ones working on, you know, perhaps manage the tax rate or even OPEB liability, other than the fact that we may manage the OPEB liability by legislative outreach. But, you know, so, I mean, if we're going to say, yeah, item seven here is a high priority, which, you know, I may be voting for item seven because I like the legislative outreach, but everybody else may be voting for item seven because they like the OPEB liability, and somebody's going to get disappointed, I fear.
Okay. What I tried to do, and I understand what you said, I've heard every word, what I tried to do was nestle them all under revenue-type things, that these were basically all within revenue of either incoming or outgoing or liability against our community. And we said, okay, are we concerned with work, putting our energies into number seven, as opposed to our energies into number two? Which do we think is a higher priority for the benefit and the healthiness of our town? That was what I was trying to do. Excuse me, Stephen?
Do you want to go first?
No, because I was just going to ask a question on the process.
Oh, okay. I think, if I may, Richard, I guess how I would articulate this, is item number seven is a goal, is approve, plan for and improve towns' long-term financial health. And then those items are specific items that we want to address within that goal. And the other thing I'll say is, as we look at establishing goals, priorities, whatever you want to call it, I know when we had the GFOA budget thing, you made the comment, Richard, that, you know, listing something you're already doing as a goal isn't necessarily, you know, like an achievable, like a benchmark. But I think when you talk about the policy level, I think some of these things, and it didn't occur to me when we were talking about this, and I was even doing my own list, I do think when the select board has overall goals for the community, it's possible, and in some cases, likely, they are being met. And so there's some things that, you know, goal, I mean, it's okay to have a goal of having, you know, healthy reserves and a high bond rating. That's to some extent the goal that's in hand. And so maybe if the goal is sustain it, then you do these things. I mean, it's those types of goals, because I think you're right, there are some things we're doing that are achieving these goals, and there are some things we aren't. And I think that both should be listed. If you really want to get the full picture of how to get towards one of these objectives, we're going to look at both. That's just really an editorial comment.
And it's a good point, excuse me, it's a good point, too, because there may be some of this stuff that we are already reached our full potential at, and we're just unaware of how much is going on.
Or we're just not doing it as good a way as we possibly could be.
Right, yeah. Because I think what we did, we took the collective thoughts of everybody that deals with their constituents and the mobile station, and whoever you talk to, and you know, when you look at these cumulations of things that came in here, there are some similarities. So apparently, everybody's being touched by some common events in here. And that was the whole purpose of this, it was to see collectively, what would thirty people put down on a list of what they thought were improvements that we could make? And Marie said, what's the process from here? What we're trying to do right now is figure out, how do we move to the prioritization? And like we said right now, would we want our time being spent on seven or one right now, if we were going to devote effort?
So I guess my question is, are we going to have like the top three, or are we going to take the seven and put them in order?
You're going to, if there was fifteen, you would have fifteen priorities.
Okay, so we're going to put them in the order of one to seven?
Yeah. You would have as many priorities, because undoubtedly, there's one of these items on here that's going to be the lowest priority from this board's perspective to have completed. There's going to be other items that are likely going to say, yes, that's very important to have that done.
So we're going to do like what Mark's mathematical?
Yeah, we've got a Mark mathematical sheet here.
There, oh, but that's all ready.
Yeah, it's all ready, got a graph. But that's what we're trying to get, is to that point, is how many of these items do we group, and what are we voting on? Yes, Stephen?
Can I, I'm sorry to jump back in here, but I think in terms of managing the town and the work, one of the things is, when you do that, like one through seven, and one is the absolute highest thing, and we should be spending our time on, and then seven is the least thing we should be spending our time on, to some extent, the work doesn't flow that neatly. So if you said, and this is to some extent a hyperbolic example, but one of the goals the select board settled on was, we really need to improve our snowplowing. Well, in the summertime, we're doing nothing on that goal, or we're just doing planning or something like that. I think having a range of goals, like three, four, you know, even if it's the seven, that are just kind of, because I don't think this list is too big to say, when we're planning our next year's capital plan or our budget, to look at all seven and be like, okay, well, here's kind of a target we want to reach in what we're doing. So that's where I would say, I would caution against saying, this is the most important, and, you know, and then some of these things may land outside of either the board or the town manager's control.
True.
And if it's the top goal, and none of us can do anything about it.
Then we find out.
Then we find out, right. So that's.
And to follow up what you're saying, I understand, and people that are listening should understand, say the town manager may only have fifteen, twenty percent of his day that he can dedicate to new projects. And sometimes, it's not even that much time. Well, let's just say it's fifteen percent. So all of this stuff that we are looking at fits into that fifteen percent. Or you redirect some of the time and energy that they're putting in, because the review of this may turn down to the point that Stephen, for instance, could say, you know, I'm dedicating effort towards something that is really not bringing benefit to our community. And I'm going to de-emphasize that. And I'm going to place more emphasis, say, on long-term capital development or legislative affairs. It has a much larger return for our community. So they'll make conscious decisions on how they shift their time. And this goes down all the way into the workforce. I mean, people make a conscious decision what they do every day. And that's this whole process. What we're talking about is, we're not trying to set this in concrete. It's kind of a general guide from the year 2014 on where this board felt we needed improvement, or where we needed edification of where we're at, I guess is a better way. Because you say, some of these things may already be being done to a hundred percent, and we're just not aware of it. Yes, Mark?
I'm hearing where we're headed with this. I think that I've got a couple of concerns that I just want to express. One is, we've got a town with more or less four hundred employees on the town side, not to mention the school department people. We ought to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time by that, and I don't mean that in a derogatory manner. We ought to be able to do multiple activities and multiple things at the same time. And I think that's what you said to some degree, Stephen. But more importantly, you know, as we go to evaluate or assess these or prioritize these, to me, it's going to be important to understand, you know, what's the deliverable outcome of each of these? Not just that we're going to work on it, but, you know, what are we committing to achieving by the end of this fiscal year or by halfway through the year? And, you know, it doesn't need to be, and we said this before, you know, the one on the DPW complex doesn't say, we need to be in a new DPW facility by June 30th. That's not going to happen. But we should set a deliverable outcome. And, you know, the technical phrase, or the phrase that's often used, is the phrase of SMART goal. And SMART is an acronym, and it, you know, it's measurable and attainable and time-bound and all those things that we want to do. And I think if we're going to start evaluating these or prioritizing these, I think it may be important for us to be doing that with the sense of, what's the deliverable in this year? Because there may be things that, you know, A versus B, but A, we're going to get a lot further this year, and B is a really, really, really long-term project. You know, yeah, the first step, you know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step, but let's get something done and achieve it. So, I don't know how we go and put deliverables on these, but I think at some point, we need to do that and set our SMART goals.
Right. The deliverables do come later, as you well know. Once we set, in other words, let's just say the number one project was DPW complex reorganization, whatever that full thing. And that will come in this process, where we sit down and talk about what this really is. And you're right, that's when the deliverables come on the table, and we say, okay, we have got to make a decision by, or what do we need to make a decision? And this is when we'll make a decision by, and then the decision is made. Then you've got deliverables. Some of these things, as you well know, may be multi-year projects. They could be five years. Some of these are extremely long-range. They're not, you're not going to get them done overnight. We're fools for even thinking we can. But some of these are things that we can start to actively produce now. I mean, if you turn our zoning officer loose and say, go on out there and find visual quality standards, zoning standards and bylaws, I'm sure he could get a flood of them in here from different communities that have enacted bylaws. It's the point of saying, this is important to this community, and we collectively, as select board members, have communicated to town manager, these are important things we'd like to see happen in our community. But I agree with everything you said. The deliverables, they're there, but they're nested under this. We first have got to say what's important. And to give our town manager a list of thirty things and say they're all equally important, I'll throw up his hands for him. I mean, I wouldn't blame him. He'll throw up his hands and say, what do you want? What's the number one? And that's our chore, is to somehow, and you've got a wealth of experience in this, in your professional life, on bringing this down to fruition, on what's the number one most important priority in this town. And I'm sure that we could almost say what it is right now if we put our minds to it, but there is, there has to be a number one of them.
So do you want our sevens? And is there a chart, and then we're going to do the formula?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll do the deliverables?
Once we figure out how many groups we got, and maybe Mark is having... Once we figure out how many groups we got, and maybe Mark is having, Mark's having trouble maybe with the groups, and Mark, do you want to make it more groups? Break them out?
I mean, I'd have used all 30 items, and in fact, they're not 30, because there's duplicates, so it's probably 24, 25 items. But I would have looked at it as 25 separate items personally, because I think they deserve to be evaluated one against the other. I understand, after you go through that, you might say, look, you know, the top four all fall into the same general category of finance resources to achieve it. Why don't we go find some that take resources from another organization? Because we can, in fact, walk and chew gum at the same time, we can do multiple things, and why overburden the finance department with doing our five, you know, top items and tell our, you know, Parks and Rec Department, you got to pass this year, there's no key goals for you to work on.
Yes, I think you made the comment about the consultants borrowing your watch to tell you what time it is. If your hands are tied behind your back, then you're glad that they could borrow your watch, because then you don't know what time it is. And I think, you're right, we can walk and chew gum. We do that every day, and sometimes walk, chew gum, and juggle. I think everyone, and that's the thing, there are, just to give you, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to sound defensive, but just to put things in perspective, the bylaw review is something that we don't need a lot out, either little or no outside help on. Town council, billing inspector, members of the ZB, we're actually already doing it, there's really no need, they can get on the internet and look at the things. So that's a task that requires zero outside help. The streetlights are one we discovered does need some outside help, and some of these fall one way or the other, and I just want to make sure as we go forward, we're open-minded about, because it's, some of this is, resource planning is probably the last step in this process, but I do think it needs to be a part of it.
But Stephen, not to, and again, this isn't to get too detailed, but let's take the bylaw review, for example. You know, it first came up two and a half, three years ago, and because there's been nobody pushing it, it kind of has languished. And so the question is, even though the Select Board doesn't need to do it themselves, you know, my sense would be that if this becomes one of our priorities, then every other or every third Select Board meeting, we ask for what's going on, how's the review, are you on progress? You know, whether it's, we're asking you, or we bring in the people who are doing it, so that they feel that there's a sense of commitment by the town board to actually get it done. Otherwise, at the end of the year, they're going to say, the dog ate my homework, sorry, nothing got done, and what are we going to say? So, okay, we'll pick it up again next year, maybe.
Go ahead, Marie.
If we have to categorize 30, I think we should just shut down the meeting, everyone go home, because we got to work on organizing 30 numbers. But if we stick to the seven and we coordinate the seven, I think that maybe, as it says, let's say, three and four and five have numerous topics in it, and then we will categories or vote on what we really feel we want to do in number four or number five, and I think, I'm hoping it will shift out to a process where it's something reasonable that we can actually, and then vote on the deliverables for four, because four, we might decide, after we pick it as the number one or two or three or whatever, that we, out of all these things, we want to try to do this one, which is update.
But Marie, that process, you know, and let's take number four, because it's arbitrary. Okay? You know, I may have, because it was on my list, developed the water tower property, and therefore, I'm going to vote for number four to be first.
Right.
Okay? Paul's got blind tennis courts, that was on his list, he may vote for number four first because he wants the blind tennis court. So four comes up first. Now we decide which one of those we're going to be doing, and it ends up as bliss tennis courts, I'm going to say, wait a second, I'd have much rather had something else beside number four, because I don't think, you know, if that's the case. So that's my argument for looking at these as individuals. If we're going to go after blind tennis courts ultimately, we all ought to agree that that's one of our priorities to continue review, blind tennis courts or the traffic or whatever the item is. And really, the process for him, you know, I've seen this process do 50 and 60 items prioritization. Doing 25 really shouldn't be that difficult, and at least we, they get a fair hearing, and they also get a sense of consensus. You never get 100% agreement, but you get a consensus that, yep, it was the blind tennis courts that we all said was the most important, or in the top five of these things.
Richard, you know, you've done a bunch of management, so have you, I don't, maybe everybody here has, but management training type stuff, but one option then, and I would agree with Marie, we'd be here till dawn if we did it tonight, but you can take either a three or a five-point scale, and then rank each of the 30 or 25 items, whatever, on your own with the scale, and then whichever one comes out with the most points, kind of wins by default, you know, that's kind of an easy way to do it, I've found, and you're not married to that result, it's not like it's a threat, you know, no matter what the thing is, if it comes out with the most points, we're doing it, you can go back and see, how did things score out, and be like, you know, that isn't really a reflection of what we're about, let's go find a different way to skin the cat.
Yeah, Stephen, that process, and I have done this a lot, I do this now professionally, but that process works and it works well. The downside of that process is because you haven't reached the conclusion collectively that the people who didn't vote for it don't necessarily buy, it may have the highest numerical score, but you don't have the buy-in that you have if you have five people sitting in a room, pardon the expression, fighting it out, which hopefully we're not doing, but discussing out the issues and agreeing that, okay, I understand why that came out number five, because clearly, the best process was, the easiest process is, everybody go home, come back with your list and rank everything on a one to five scale, we add up the numbers, and the highest ones win, and that becomes a consensus, but there will be no buy-in. And so you're, it's convenience versus ultimate buy-in.
But that's why I think when Rich prefaces by saying what a monumental task this is, when you look at the slides, just with a few items on them, that doesn't look that tough, but when you describe it like you did, it is hard to get to consensus on that, and that's where, just to me, is just a good next step, because I don't think we're going to get this tonight, or even maybe in the next meeting, because like you said, Mark, these are things that have been kicking around for years. A good next step is, let's see what that looks like. You know, this is just a suggestion, I mean, I'm just making a suggestion, I'd say, let's see what that looks like.
And it's a valid point. And Mark, I understand what you're saying, I really do, and I agree, and I, you had a small prioritization, I used to prioritize about 400 projects, so I'll give you some hints here later on, but 290 of them are guesses. There's no such thing as prioritizing when you got that far. This list would likely boil down, I'm going to guess, in the range of maybe 20 items. And if this board is willing to dedicate themselves to ranking 20 items, I am certainly dedicating myself to redoing this list and trying to drop it down and get us down to 20. I will make up a larger matrix, and we can actually get in. Now, it will not, it will not be unanimous vote, because it's only going to take three people to set a priority on one. You're not going to get five people to agree on every single one, so if three people say that that's a priority, then that one goes on. In agreement?
Yeah, can I just explain a little bit what this process is, because there may be a middle ground here? What Richard's working on is a process called paired rankings, and the paired rankings process is one where you literally compare each project or each proposal with one other proposal. And we did this a few years ago, I think, on the Select Board, and you decide that item one is a higher priority than item two. Okay, now let's compare item one to item three, and item one to item four, and item one to item five, and you keep going, and then you end up with item two versus three, and two versus four, and on and on, you find out how many items win their pairings, and therefore, one would think that they're the most important. The value of it doesn't necessarily come in the rankings, because we could do the same thing, each go home and do paired rankings. The value of it comes in the discussion the first time through of understanding what somebody meant when they wrote down review policies of our police department. So Alex has explained it a little bit more, but when we're comparing that versus another, we get a chance to discuss them. And, you know, I mean, it's, clearly, it's 8:30 now, but, you know, I don't know what else we had on the agenda tonight, but to me, to go through a process of, once through, or partially way through it, discuss these issues might be a way, and I'm not saying we need to do that, might be a way then to put down amongst us the basis for us to go home and rank the rest ourselves. But I think we each have to, clearly, because of the initial process, didn't give the person proposing that item sufficient time to really explain what was truly the details of it, nor to allow us to evaluate them one-on-one. So that might be a potential alternative, is to go through partial of this and take the rest of it as a homework. On the other hand, I'll tell you, the other process that works just as well is the sticky note process, where 20 things get listed on a board, everybody gets three sticky notes with your initials on them, and you get to go up the board and put a sticky note next to the top three that you want. I mean, there's dozens and dozens of methods of ranking, you know, multiple opportunities for priority, you know? All I'm saying is, of the ones we've seen, you know, the paired rankings ends up giving the greatest amount of later consensus on the conclusion, as opposed to, I didn't have a sticky note there, or it didn't have my numbers one through five.
Well, the sticky note approach is essentially what I was saying for taking this home, and instead of a sticky note, put a dot with your pen, but do it not in front of everybody.
See, but doing, the sticky note is, you know, so everybody gets, in a real process, you might use different colors if it's got your initials on it, you put it up, and then you get a chance to look at it, and you get to move them, because there is some interaction, and you can talk to people while you do it.
Right, but that's where I think doing that, and kind of seeing how that list looks, gets us ahead to then redoing it, or then moving to the paired ranking, you know, I think we need to look at this as a multi-step process, and at least, that would certainly help me, because I think, you know, building consensus is important to follow, you can't jump to the end. I know I'd like the chance to do that, to go through and just say, whether it's three metaphorical sticky notes, or dots, or five, I'd like the chance to go through and say, okay, I'm going to give townwide procedures and operational standards, I'm going to give that, it's really important to me, obviously, and so I'm going to give that three dots, and then everything else, I'm going to give one or two dots, things that are less important. That's all I was saying.
Okay. Paul?
Yes, thank you. I think we can call it whatever you want to call it. I think that, I think I told you my apprehension with doing this process was that we go down a road that you just keep going down. I really think this is about Select Board goals. You want to call them long-range, short-range, and I think what we have on these pieces of paper, we have policies, long-range planning with short-term goals, all mixed up in it, and they're categorized, and they're mixed up in it. And I see 25 points of view on there that have to be voted on, and I think having the town managers there for point of reference is helpful, but I see 25 items that we should be looking at. I think this is incumbent upon this board to talk about the goals that they want to see. You have, we have the ability to name short-term, long-term, midterm, whatever, but you cannot sit down here and clump these together and then say, let's vote on it, because I don't think a reorganization, looking at a reorganization of the DPW is the same as a DPW complex. One's a capital item, one's a personnel item, and while they could go hand-in-hand somewhere down the road, I certainly don't believe that they can be achieved in the same year, or they could be achieved in the same year if you put off a reorganization or review or whatever you want to call it. I just, I really believe we can really start to complicate things, and the easy thing to pull back and say, okay, what does the Select Board want, and Mark talked about three categories, break them into whatever, you want to break it into seven categories, break it into seven, but you can't mix operational with capital, with process, with standards, and come up and expect, I'm certainly not going to vote on something, this is the first time I saw everybody else's goals there listed altogether. So it's the first time I saw Alex's and Mark's, I know Marie's and Richard's, and Marie's and the town managers was in the packet last meeting, I think it was. So I actually have a concern about the seven categories, because I think it mixes and matches, or mismatches items. I really believe that, Rich, this is something that you sit down and we say, what are the goals? And there's only certain goal categories. A goal category can encompass everything. I mean, strategic planning is a big thing to put on a board, and if you're going to talk about building a new DPW complex without having strategic planning as your number one goal, or managing the tax rate as number one or 1A, then you're not doing strategic planning or managing the tax rate, if that ends up being a priority of the board.
Right.
So we're, it just seems that we're going back to a similar theme of, you know, let's stick it all up there, we're going to cherry pick something down the road, and that's what's going to get accomplished. And I think the simple thing is, you have 25 categories, that five members of the board set, those are the things that come up and say, okay, what are the goals? And they have to be distinguished between policy, capital, and things like that, to where one has, a bylaw review may have something to do with budgetary items, in the sense of, we might have to hire someone, if that's what it came down to, for example, but the reality is, it shouldn't be part of an overall structure when you're talking about long-range managing the tax rate. And sure, somewhere along the line, it will dove into that, but the reality is, it won't for the most part, unless it becomes a capital, a budgetary item to hire a code enforcer, for example, or something along that line. I just think that, and like I said, this was my fear, that my apprehension about doing this was that, we're going to sit down and, I just, I think it's all mixed together, and I think that, you can score it however you want to score it, come up with a system, and the other thing I really think that should be done is, you know, everybody presented something, we presented it, there were some clarification questions, no one understands why, why would say, pause the funding of bliss tennis court, or blind tennis courts and look at what we want with it? I mean, that's, you know, that didn't get, I didn't get into that at that point, no one asked, and I think that, or any other item that someone said, I think the reality is that, you know, everybody has some, I think, more in-depth reasons why they listed those particular items, and I think that's what should be discussed.
Well, you had, everybody had the floor.
Oh, no, I did, but you asked for clarification questions, I mean, you know, again, I don't think, I think one of the ground rules was not to really go after, you know, not go after.
Yeah, we don't want to turn it into a negative party, but I mean, you can certainly say anything that we want in support of a project. I mean, I was hoping that's what we would have.
Okay.
You know, as much information kick out.
I also misunderstood the intent of that first pass. I thought it was clearly a...
I, yeah, I didn't think it was debatable, more or less, of what anybody, that's my, I guess.
What else would you have given out?
I would have asked other questions and clarifying questions.
Would you, do you want to go back to that, and ask if you've got questions? I mean, we don't, we don't want to bypass the process, guys. Yes, Marie?
And I guess we're also, when we approached the issue, we all handled it a little differently, because like I was, I thought you said, name the top five problems in town, so I went up to 30,000 feet. But now, if I'm going to prioritize what I want done this year, my list is going to be a little bit different, because if I want now, because that would be more my action steps, I would probably come up with another five, that would say, these are the five I'd like us to reach right now. I thought we were looking at, here's our big problems, and then we were going to discuss and decide from those categories where we were going.
It eventually gets down to it, but you're getting down into tasks, the actual, how do we accomplish? What we, what we are trying to come at is say, what do we, what does everybody here agree is high priority needs for our community? And I think everybody here said revenue income is a high priority, so we know that every one of these board members agrees on that. And that's all we say, is, what priority do we want? What priority do we want the town manager to be working on revenue enhancement? And then we start to build a plan, he comes back and says, okay, here's the following ways that I can get revenue enhancement. Great, fantastic, let's go after them. But until there's a framework provided around that, I mean, you can, you can see easily where a person can, if 80% of the day is filled with routine duties, and there's only 20% left over, and that's likely giving a lot of extra time, 20%, it's not much time to accept new projects and new energies and new efforts, but that's all we're trying to do, is provide the guidance to get in that direction, on what we felt is important. The only thing that we asked tonight was to present, to present your project, and I tried to craft all the notes I could from what everybody gave me, and if I left something out, I'm very sorry, because there was no intent to leave stuff out. I tried to sensitize the material, bring it out. The only thing we said tonight during the presentation phase, we're not going to debate a project, because that's not how you get to where we have to be. The debate is down the road, it's next, it's down there. When you actually get to setting a work plan, that's when you start debating, and you go one-on-one and debate, okay, how are we going to do this? Not the merit of an idea, because when you brainstorm something, all hands are off, you brainstorm, you can throw anything on the table you want. And then, the next step is when you go in and start saying, okay, what's really important? Now the brainstorming, that's still ahead of us.
Well, then, do you want to start brainstorming, like one of your categories, like generate new income, like you pointed out?
No, I think, I think what we've got to do is get to the point now, what Mark brought up, is what does everybody have comfort in, in us setting this list down on what we think are the priorities? Because that's where we stalled, is when we got to that point. And I've heard people say that maybe they wanted more information to make that determination. If that's what we need, is more information, then we'll just open it right back up and go right back to where that discussion was. Yes, Mark?
Well, so I'm going to take you up on that for one second, Rich, if I could. So, and I'm just going to start at the top, because it's the top, but, so the first... I'm just gonna start at the top, because it's the top. But, so the first one on the list is one of yours, and strategic planning. So, you know, I mean, the questions are, does that mean we're going to form a blue ribbon commission of citizens, and employees, and consultants, and select board members, and do, and develop an updated strategic plan for the town, in which case, my next question would be, and what elements of the town will be included in that strategic plan? Is it everything from the charter to, you know, facilities development, to operations, you know, because a strategic plan can have personnel issues, and so, you know, before I'd be able to vote on that, you know, I need to understand, or is the strategic plan something we're gonna do by meeting an extra two hours once every week as a select board, to work through a strategic plan, and focus on certain areas that we think are important for the strategic plan for the town, that we think are important? And that's just one example of, you know, how I would go back and start, you know, if I was gonna start getting into what these mean, before I can rank strategic plan, I need to understand the extent involved, who's response, who would end up doing this if we, if we did this, what the cost to the town is, does this mean we're gonna go out and hire consultants to work with the town and develop the strategic plan? Does it mean it's gonna be all done in, you know, and, because that's what's needed to rank that. And I can go literally down the list and ask for the details, and I think that if...
I don't think it's possible to have those details presented to you to rank them, because if it is, then it means that we've worked through every one of these in the most immaculate detail, and we're not gonna do that to the point of setting, we're trying to say, do we want the town manager to work on strategic planning?
Well, but, but the question is, what you just said is a definition, we want the town manager to work on strategic planning. That's very different from, we want to develop a strategic plan for the town of Long Meadow by the end of this fiscal year. You know, that...
We've got a 2004 plan, and Paul's got his vision, thank, there's a lot of pieces out there that need to be brought together. Other communities are holding yearly strategic planning meetings with the populists from the community, with the community leaders, with all the division chiefs, and everybody coming in and talking about problems in the town, and we're not doing that.
Right, and so you're, this is a town-wide, you know, include, inclusive system of upgrade, you know, it sounds like upgrading the 2004 town long-range plan, is that what that means?
That's one piece of it, Mark, yes. It's opening the window and saying, are we gonna have a dedicated effort on strategic planning in our community? Because right now, we don't.
And the question is, by whom, and with who's involved with? And what's the role of us versus the role of everybody else?
We know for sure that the select board will be partners in anything moving forward, but 98% of this is gonna fall on the shoulders of the town manager to implement.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? You said we could go back to clarifying questions, I'm gonna do that. I think part of what I'm hearing is an issue of nomenclature. If we're talking about master planning, land use planning, that's one thing. Strategic planning, there is a strategic planning element of a master plan, but I think maybe that's one of those things where, maybe as we, as each board member, if we so choose to follow this, goes through and puts a question mark next to things that aren't really, I mean, I know we had those slides of questions and follow-up, but obviously, you don't think of it right then and there, especially when we're trying to get through the presentation. If Mark asks for follow-up on strategic planning, and then we, but rather than have that debate on 30 items or 20 items, if strategic planning doesn't bubble to the surface as one of the top five or 10, then it may not be necessarily right now worth the time to spend to drill down into it that far. And so, and if it is like the top priority, then we should spend time defining it and creating kind of a scope of work.
Okay, and just the last pitch for the process I talked to you about earlier today, the paired ranking, is, is that when you've got 25 items, if that's what it comes down to, or 22 items, each one gets evaluated against itself and in the abstract, as opposed to the paired ranking that allows you to say, you know, which one is a higher priority to you, doing the strategic planning process, or generating new income? And all you've got to do is, you don't have to evaluate either one absolutely, you're just evaluating them relatively, which is a whole lot easier in terms of the time it takes to do it, because you, and so that's...
Relative value to our community.
Right, it's not an absolute value.
Right, it's absolute, and we don't know the details of what it's gonna...
But you may not need them if you're just doing a relative value.
We're just saying that we think it's fairly important to at least look at strategic planning, or change the name of it, whatever you want to call it. Long-range planning, comprehensive planning.
Comprehensive master plan.
Anything. It just, the fact is, where is the guiding light for this community to transcend this board to the next board, and the next town manager, and that's not, where is that guiding document that's out there? And there should be something.
For development and land use planning.
Yes, most healthy organizations have a master plan that they refer to, that people adjust to, that they don't, that it doesn't go the opposite way. You hire in a new job, there's usually goal statements that you just fill in and go for. You don't remanufacture the world just because you took a new job, you fit to whatever was there, and you continue to reinforce that action. That's what we want to do, Mark, only. And you say, all your points are well taken, but there's thousands of details in under these things, every one of these, on how we're gonna make them, and what they're gonna cost, and is it feasible? Some of these ideas will may come before the board and say, no, there's no way we're gonna put that much money in, okay?
Should we do the five stickies? I mean, we could put five stickies on here, and see if anyone...
You can do it, I think, I think what I need, what I need, they obviously, it sounds like we want to condense, or make the list longer. Now, what I would like to do is find out, what does the board want to see on our next meeting? What type of document would you like to see? We know this list here is exactly what was submitted under the topics that you gave. We can go ahead and open the discussion against, right now, we are in open discussion, and we can ask any more questions than we want about these things, or we can, or I can go through, and you can go through, and every member can go through, and we can filter out where we feel the basic duplications are. I mean, we basically heard what the intent was. I mean, Paul, Paul had the intent on his project, we know approximately what he's talking about, or what the gist of his discussion is. We don't know the details, but we know the general lay of the land. And I think we can likely eliminate 10 to 12 of these that are duplications. I see DPW basically, and I understand what Paul said, well, there's difference, this, that, and the other, but still, it's dealing with DPW. Whether you're building a new complex, or redoing the organization, or outsourcing, there's still energies that go towards DPW. It's all centers in on that organization, that division.
But, but items 11, 22, and 26 are identical. They're absolutely identical.
Right.
DPW facility, DPW complex, DPW complex, they're identical.
Right.
We don't need all three of those.
So, we'll cross out 22 and 26?
Can I also, I just, I want to point the clarification. I really, Rich, you're the chair of the select board, and as I said, having the downtown manager's point of view is good for reference. I don't see those as five items that are included in the list of 25.
Okay, I asked, I asked every member to give in, because I had to have the perspective from the manager that is implementing the plan that we placed before him. I said, okay, you've been in your job one and a half years, what are your feelings now? And I think, I think what we've seen is, there's a lot of echo coming from the town manager of what we've said, if I'm not mistaken. DPW, charter review, bylaw review, update master plan, quint truck. It would seem like all five of those ricochet back. Paul, I understand your point, the town manager's not a voting member on the...
And I think that's the point, and that's the only point, Rich.
Not a voting member when we prioritize these, but I asked for the input from the perspective on what is he seeing in his job? And I see the echoes. Everybody agree? It looks like they echo.
And Richard, I think you can take my 21, and if you really read my action plans, it would have been a charter review committee. So, you can call that the charter review committee, and so you can cross out 27.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna put, I'm, for the purposes of discussion, I'll put X2 Stevens ones right now, because I, they're so noted in there.
But if you wanted a charter review committee, then what we ought to do is X out 21, and leave it as the charter review committee.
Well, he says he didn't want Stevens, so that's why.
Rename yours charter review committee, whatever it is, I don't care.
And you've also got...
Alex, I have a question for you. Your item 19 was review and improve DPW operations.
Yep.
I'm gonna cross out my number 13, I think they're...
Yeah, no, I think...
Mine was an end result as opposed to...
Yeah, no, I think, I think you and I were saying the same thing.
Yeah.
And you can cross out my 23, because I think it's number five, is most of my action steps would be dealt with, Rich is number five.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Your budgetary stresses were all mostly concerned with OPEB?
Yeah, and salary issues.
What other ones have been crossed out?
My 21 became charter review. New 22 was crossed out, because new DPW complex was already in there.
Got it.
23 was crossed out, because it was OPEB liability, we could go with that. Generate new income, number 12, is very similar to 2, in my opinion.
Yeah, 2 had a lot of things in it, it was all, it was all money-related.
So, do you feel comfortable crossing out number 12?
I only feel comfortable on what the group wants to cross, though.
I would think number 2 has nothing to do with number 12. Number 2 is lobbying efforts, number 12 is revenue generation for the town of Long Meadow. I think they're distinctly different, and even the way that Richard had, I think, written it down or read, is very different than bringing in additional revenue.
Okay, so leave the generate new income in there, right, under marks?
I'm just saying there's a difference. Again, I think we're going down a road that we're doing this, we're putting on the board, cross out this one, add this one, and I just, you're either gonna set goals, or we're not gonna set goals. I guess that's my point of view, is that this doesn't get us to the point of setting goals, this gets us going down a road of what we think in this wonderful town, of what we should do, and how it should look, and whether the roads are paved with gold, and so forth. And I don't think that you can talk about strategic planning in the same way that you can talk about, or talk about it mutually exclusive to any of the other items that you have on here, and I think we're, you're losing the forest for the trees, but keep going.
Okay, so we're gonna leave number 12 in.
Okay, number 16 is duplicate of number 6.
Which number?
6 and 16.
6 and 16. Okay.
I'm in favor of striking 16, because on the slide, it looked too close to execute the town manager.
How did, what does that look?
I was two words away from being execute the town manager, so I was...
Paul, is departmental select board briefings similar to townwide procedures and operational standards?
No, not at all.
Where are you talking about?
Oh, how about 20 and 4? Is there any difference between 20 and 4?
Yeah, I think those are different.
Well, I'll drop off the operational standards, and we'll let townwide procedures and operational standards, if there's more meat on that. I think, I think they're more or less the same thing, but we don't need both of them. So, drop 4?
How about 3 and 28?
3 and 28...
Is 28 inclusive, includes all of 3?
We took all, we took 28, we took 26 through 30 out, didn't we?
Yeah, I put an X to them. So, we'll leave...
What do you want to put, do you want, bylaw review, I thought?
It's ongoing right now. What was the number you had up there, Marie, at the top?
3.
3?
3 to 28.
Okay, I'll just put bylaw review there.
Okay.
And that, as I say, that is ongoing right now.
Update master plan?
Number?
Well, I'm thinking that's sort of similar to what we were, do we have anything on that? Blinn tennis courts is like a, and water tower property, are those all master plan things?
What was your update master plan? What number?
Well, that was Stevens, but I'm trying to think, isn't Blinn tennis courts and developed water tower property, can't they be merged and just be called update master plan?
But updating the master plan doesn't do the same thing as developing, starting to act on the water tower property, or on the Blinn tennis courts, you know, I think...
I think, yeah.
The master plan is the 2004 study, and any other associated documents, I don't know if you've got cultural resource plans, or anything else that fits in there.
Open space, yeah.
Yeah, you got open space plans, so there's other plans that are part of that process.
The shelves are filled with plans.
Yeah, they are. Okay, so, the update, update the planning?
Just a quick question. We have number 10, implement charter commission. We also had 21, which we changed to charter review committee. One's a commission, one's a committee, they're different, but they're looking at the charter.
Right, and that's the item that'll be, that'll be determined on which way we go by based on the decisions you made, because there's two options, a committee or a charter. We got a long-term capital plan, we've got to have that shown someplace else in here, too. Alex had long...
That's kind of a, I mean, it's kind of a distinct idea.
What's that, Alex?
Well, I mean, it's like I was saying, to have, to set up a structure, and to go about, I mean, setting up a new structure to look at capital as a whole.
We're down to 19, Richard.
Yeah, it's not like it's...
It's, 19's a manageable level for five people, six people.
Well, see, the problem is, under strategic planning, I had like 15 different items that I talked about, because there's so many things falling under it, you know, that I didn't put in the thing that I talked about.
Well, the same things with mine, I'm basically ripped apart my list to try to make it work over here.
Right, and that's why we're starting to consolidate on this original seven here, getting them mixed in there that were very similar type things.
Are we looking to, were we, are you all looking to get to like a consolidation of different things, or?
Yeah, just getting the list down, and then I'll redo the list.
Would it be okay to comment on details of things, if like, I see where there's linkages between two items that, would that be all right, or just let it ride?
Yeah, if you got, if you've got something to throw out.
Well, I think to Alex's point about capital planning, right now, under the charter, the capital planning committee is in charge of capital planning, and if you wanted to create a new capital planning structure with some, you know, with some people of CPC, or community preservation, capital planning, create more like a super committee versus just the one capital planning committee, which I think you're right, Barry did feel like that was a good idea, that, to me, would fall under charter review, because that would be a charter change to have it be the thing. And so, I think, you know, that's a linkage that you could make there. So, that's my only perspective on that. Like I said, I don't think, I do think Barry thought that was a good idea, and I think there is merit. We try and do it administratively now, but to codify that would be a charter review issue.
And actually, that was recommended in the state manual, when they set up the committee, was a multidisciplinary committee such as that. They even recommended to have a select board member on there.
Well, and that's what I was...
Yeah, that was, that was the state, now, it wasn't a mandate, it was a recommendation from the state.
I mean, I guess, to me, this long-term, the way I put it out there is sort of a distinct idea, in part because I'm not in favor of wholesale look at our charter. So, like, that's why I would keep the two things separate.
Well, I think that you need to do, you need to have a charter group to write what those changes are gonna be, because those are, it's a charter change that's required to do that.
Right, but I would want it only to be that. I mean, if, if what came along with that was, let's, you know, let's change our form of government, then I would want to eliminate that from my list.
Well, no, that would be commission, that would be the commission.
I think that's what Mr. Gold was just talking about just a short while ago.
Yeah, one person wanting one thing only?
No, right, and then so I think...
Yeah. Any more, any more dupes or stuff that we can throw out?
Richard, can I make a general comment about this process? And I, I guess the first thing I would say is, I would commend the amount of effort that you put into this, to organize this information, and I think it has structured our discussion.
Sounds like there's a but coming, though.
It's funny, usually this is what happens when a judge talks to you, when he starts, when the first thing he says is complimentary, you know that the next thing's gonna be bad.
You're going to really fit in well in jail, right?
No, actually, all I was going to say was, I mean, this process question is, I guess to me, well, first point, I guess, whatever we come up with, whatever the end product, which is going to be some sort of document, I'm not sure that the end goal, which I think is a laudable one of having this living document that people stay with over the years, I'm not sure that's ever going to be possible. Because this is an elective board, you know? If for one day, you know, three of us get voted out and three new people come out, I don't think there will be any fidelity to whatever document we come up with. And I'm okay with that. I mean, because, you know, that's the, you know, that's a political organization, you know, rather than sort of a board of a, say, of a nonprofit. Whereas, there's that kind of cohesion. But I guess, then I guess the other thing to me is, again, whatever we come up with this, to me, what's more important than whatever listing of the priorities is, is what you end up doing, which is setting the agenda of, you know, because that's where, you know, the rubber will meet the road. And, you know, I'm not much of a process guy. I find it a little frustrating to be speaking abstractly. I like to sort of get into the, okay, DPW facility, you know, yes or no, you know, that kind of thing. And so, I mean, I would just assume us, you know, go through whatever process we need to, to come up with this list, and then see where this goes, you know, in terms of, you know, the coming meetings, you know, the things that you put on the agenda, so that we really get into it. I guess the thing that I would encourage as you do that, as you set the agenda, is that we have, keep in mind, things that are immediate and things that are medium and things that are long-term. As I indicated in my comments before, you know, the town manager performance and the relationship with the select, I mean, like, that's, to me, is immediate. I mean, because we've already decided that it's immediate, you know? And if we can't even implement the decisions we've already been, we've already made, then, you know, in a way, like, you know, how are we going to get to, you know, something as massive as allocating the next $200 million that we get, you know? So, I mean, so that's my only comment. I'm not going to get into the nitpicking of, you know, how we numerically prioritize things.
And I'm hopeful, I understand your point, the boards do come. If you can, if you can get a process that is instilled within the local government, becomes institutionalized, and it lives regardless of the boards, because it's in the backdrop of the way the town's managed. If you can get the processes in place, in other words, most of this stuff that we've talked about, we think needs to be improved. And if you can change the culture and embed the benefits of this within the work culture and the different groups, then it lives on its own out there.
Yeah.
It can be a self-breeding animal, because I agree with you, the boards change and the things change all the time. And this board here is taking and put up thirty items or twenty-five items per se that they feel is important. And I dare say, if we'd gone out here ten years ago, we may have got the same twenty-five, maybe a couple variances. What do you think, Mr. Gold? You think it changed that much?
Ten years ago, it would have been different, but five years ago, it would have been the same.
Yeah, because these things, I mean, we've become aware of OPEB, so that's a new thing we're aware of, and DPW facility we're aware of that's falling down. So, there's, the basic budgetary and the standards and all that, I would tell, would have been there before. And they didn't come to the format, or, you know, and maybe I'm wrong. Maybe these are all new. But it's a process. I am hopefully, if you set a process in and it works, and somebody remembers that they can bring it back every two or three years and go right back through it just to refresh all the documents. But unfortunately, the 2004 study is still sitting on somebody's bookshelf.
But, Richard, why is it sitting on somebody's bookshelf?
Because nobody's done anything with it.
But why has nobody done anything?
Nobody's pushed it.
That's, thank you.
That's not necessarily true. That was done pre-charter.
Yeah.
And every little thing that could be done without any heavy lifting was done.
Yeah.
And the town manager that came in said, "I'm going to do X, Y, and Z," and she did. And then it was done, because it becomes a money issue.
The small lift items.
But the rest of it becomes a money issue.
Right, but it was never brought to the board that I've seen.
In 2004, it was.
Okay, but I mean, since I've been around, I've never seen anybody coming in and saying, "Hey, according to 2004 study, I need $100,000 next year to do this." Because it'd be welcoming to hear that. That would start to set directions.
Right, but I think one of the big things in the long-range plan was putting townhouses up on Wolfswamp Field. A massive project.
Right.
And the reason is, is not enough fields. So, they came up with a great idea, knowing there was no way to do it. And, but that's part of the long, and that's one of the big things in the long-range plan, putting not low-income housing, but apartment rate, market rate apartments.
Market rate apartments.
So, I, you know, I think that the cherry pick things have been done. I, you know, I'll tell you, ten years ago, no, these weren't, nine years ago, these weren't the issues of the board, most of the stuff. Five years ago, some of them were similar. I think the reality that you see is that, and I want to just take one step back, I don't think a streetlight purchase should be part of this document. Because I think that's an operational issue in the year that you do it. It is not, it is a goal. It shouldn't be necessarily a long-term goal. It will provide some sort of tax cost relief to the town. But there are certain things that should be done that are, you know, directives, objectives, that aren't necessarily part of a long-range document. And, I mean, if we're looking at, I know this is to say, you know, we're going to look at, when you talk about improving standards and so forth in operations, I think that that's a, that is definitely a long-term thing, because things don't change overnight. There's a lot of things, a lot of pieces that go into it. So, that's a down-the-road type of thing. When you're talking about the FY15 or FY16 budget, of which we're going to be talking about in two months, or it's going to start the process, we haven't even talked about that part yet. And I think that, that's why I'm saying, is that when you look at some of this stuff, when you talk about implementing a charter commission, you know, that's what I think belongs in this type of document. Talking about revenue enhancement, and we've talked about it, we've beaten it to death, and I think there's a lot of things that can and cannot come out. It's either the board makes a decision on what that revenue enhancement is, or we don't. Because if we say that we want revenue ideas, and Mr. Gold was on the board, I think we got three back, and one of them was to open a store, a town, and a community house, that I don't think is there anymore, you know, but it's those little items and stuff. That, and it came, so my point is, it's either, a lot of those major things should be decided by this board to say, yes, we want to purchase streetlights. Understand, it might have to go to DPUC, but that's a directive, go to DP, go there, get them, find out what it's going to take, and do it. And if it's going to be to, you know, not manage the tax rate, because it's a little bit more longer term, but to have a budget that reflects the capital needs of the town, that we want to increase capital spending by five percent, that's not necessarily a long-range goal, it's more of a directive. And I like to see some of those perhaps, as we vote on these, those are separated from what we want to do over time versus what can be done when you vote on them. Because some of them are yes or no votes, right? I mean, when we start talking about a DPW complex, for example, we can have that as a short and long-term goal. But if it's not going to vote, if there's a vote that says, no, we're not moving that forward for X, Y, or Z, then it doesn't matter that it's here. So, I think that we should determine things that are actionable by the board this year that would help, I think, maybe, and voted on some of these things, and things that once we vote on them will be actionable over time.
Okay, I hear exactly what you're saying, but what we do, we keep jumping seven blocks down the road. We're not even close. All of what you're saying is true.
Well, you had nineteen items.
No, it doesn't, but we're in the infancy. We're not to the point of setting up the yearly work plan. That comes down the road. We've got to get past where we're at here.
But we can't continue this until December to set up the yearly work plan, because June 30th comes around really quick.
I can do it anytime I want.
Well, we clearly could, but we ought not, I guess is the better phrase.
You're tying it into finance. I'm not tying this into finance. I'm tying this into the thirty recognized needs or twenty-five recognized needs that these members brought forth that were critical of this town.
But the reality is that next June, there could be a different group of people sitting here, and if you don't accomplish it by June, then you've been wasting time, because June, you're going to go from down this path, you're going to start turning.
I adamantly disagree with that. Because if we use that as a logic, we will never move. Because that's a reason for us not to move. I can't stand and say that the next board is going to throw out what we're working on this time, because that'll be a decision they make. I think the collective wisdom of this board is a point of history on how we felt. And I think, I think the ideas that were generated from these five members are fantastic, Mark. I think it's an in-depth review of a lot of needs of our community. And I don't care what day of the year it is, you know, I mean, these are valid needs. I mean, we have said, OPEB is a liability problem. It is an absolute threat to our community. It's not going away. Manage the tax rate. It's an absolute positive thing that has to be done. I view it differently. I don't put a timetable. I say, now's the day to move forward. And I personally don't care if the next board takes this up. If they don't, they're fools, but that's not my worry.
But if you feel strongly enough about these, as we do,
Yeah.
then shouldn't we want to get to a point of making an impact on some of these in our tenure? And that impact, again, may be as significant as a change in policy or an implementation for votes at the town meeting. Or maybe less impactful, but nevertheless meaningful enough to say, and we're going to have a plan for a new DPW facility prepared and ready to vote on.
The answer is yes to everything you just said.
Right, but that's very different from, let's put together something and hope that the next group takes it up.
No, no, that's, you can't, you can't guarantee that it's going to happen unless you set in motion what needs to take place. And hope that it hangs on and hope there's enough continuity on the board. If I had that attitude, I'm sitting at, what, nine months away from not having a job on the board. I should be sitting back kicking my heels up, and yet I'm spending hours trying to work on a document that I think is going to move us forward, because it's what you collectively said was important for our community. And that's all we're trying to do. But we can't, we can't get too far ahead of the process.
But I see that, and I think it was Alex who said, that you need the component of short, medium, and longer-range items in this, in this process, because, you know...
But who says they're not going to be there? We're not there. We have not said what a priority is. When we get into any one of these, manage the tax rate, Paul, there may be seventeen steps that you would like to see for manage the tax rate, which have a variance of maybe six-month, eight-month, fifteen-year, who knows? But that comes later. Mark, you know that, you've been part of this planning process. This is just an infancy of this thing. That's going to fill in, that's in the future. All those plans and all start to lop in. But until we can figure out what's important, I mean, what would you like, we're trying to determine, what do we want to move forward with? Where do we want our energies?
And my sense is, it's going to be one of these seventeen, or hopefully, three to six of these seventeen items that we've identified.
And I agree with you. That is my hope, too, that there will be five or six that we deem as radically important.
And that we set the town manager, saying, you've got the backing of the select board, and you've got the resources of the town, now go forth and do these. And oh, by the way, let's develop some milestones so that we know that we're making progress, whether they're monthly milestones, or quarterly milestones, or an end-of-year milestone. Let's set those so that we can check, because we want to know whether our, because we're not going to physically implement these as a select board, because, you know, the town doesn't work through us, it works through its town employees. We need to know, are they making the progress that we've asked them to make on our behalf, based on the priorities that we as elected officials are setting? But if the, if that first milestone is a June 30th milestone, and it's pretty insignificant, or not sufficiently measurable, or as I use the phrase, not the smart goals that we want them to be, we're going to have a tough time setting these intermediate goals so we can assess that we're getting done what we want to get done in this tenure. So, instead of just sitting here and saying, well, we're going to plan and replan and re-replan, we're going to say, we're going to plan once and then evaluate the progress against that plan. And to me, the most important thing is setting these goals, setting our town manager and his myriads of staff and minions to lose on, getting all these things accomplished over the next nine months.
Well, I... Go ahead, Marie, sorry.
Can we just, I think we're in the process, it's working out. Do you want us to go to five stickies, or do you want us to order these? Now, I'm asking the chair, because I think after we get to that point, then we will do our smart goals and we'll move forward. So, the next step, which way do you want us to go?
I think a legitimate process is this form right here. This is a...
I'm not sure what it wants.
You will see. It's a very simplistic form. It does ask you to grade your projects, and what you consider more important than the other one. Now, it is going to be a little arguous, because we've got five people, and if we vote three that that's a priority, that becomes a priority, and there's going to be two people that may not think it's a priority. There's no way that I know of on the face of the earth for a five-member board to get around that.
Right, so what is the process? What are we doing?
The process right now is that we're trying to identify which of these items that we want to place and go into a prioritization on.
Okay, so are we voting on each one? Are you doing the pair thing? What are we doing next?
No, right now, we're trying to narrow this list down, and I'll retype it, and we'll schedule another meeting.
Okay.
And we'll come back and go into the prioritization. Because first of all, if we have twelve, fifteen items, I need to expand this graph to get it bigger.
And, okay, so the only thing I guess I would do is, on my number twenty-five, I would put next to it, master plan. Because what the action, planning and development assistant, in my opinion, is an action step. It's a smart goal. I would put down master plan as a better description and following into place with what you're talking about.
Is that the same as strategic plan?
No.
Okay.
Okay, does everybody understand, well, that's a bad way to phrase it. If we were to say strategic planning, or let me get something that's a little more benign, let's say, say, long-term capital planning was an important goal, then we would have a meeting and we would all talk on what we think a long-range capital plan should have in it. And there would be input, and we might even have a division chief in there talking about long-range, or the town engineer. And then we would flesh out what we mean by that. The only thing we're doing now is placing a priority on a long-range planning. Do we think it's important to have a long-range, past five years? Or are we happy with the current program?
See, Richard, I really think that the discussion on what a long-range capital plan means to each of us is important, because if we're going to try to get consensus, we ought to get consensus on what that means. Is it a, you know, take the, a plant, you know, for example, take a plan for, you know, buildings, for roofs, for parking lots, for heating systems, you know, and look it out, look out, add it out over ten, or twelve, or fifteen years, and plan all those things. You know, if that's what it means, then we all know what we're voting on. We don't need to say the details of what we're going to do, but we need to say, what's inclusive and what's the scope of what's meant by a long-term capital plan? And if then, three of us say, yep, we think strongly enough, let's put some details around that generalization, that's great. But right now, with just using the words long-term capital plan, that itself may mean different things to different people. I think you and I may be on the same page, because we've been on the capital planning committee, but it may mean different things to different people. So, I think that there's a requirement for us to, you know, each one of these ought to have a, you know, a couple of sentences
Okay.
of description, we don't have to write them, of description, so that I understand what is meant by, you know, that each of these, each of these items, so that when I'm coming to rank it, I know what I'm ranking.
Well, you had asked us to do steps, action steps. So, I created action steps. I'd be glad to recreate some action steps for my items. Maybe we should just do that, and then you put in...
Right, and you did, Marie, and we asked everybody to try to create some action steps, which kind of would identify more or less what Mark just said, what does this really mean to the individual submitting it? Okay, then, if, are we comfortable that we cross some of these off? Do you want me to redo this list? And get this out? Pardon?
I mean, it would be sufficient for me if we just read off, we just went through them and were clear on what was still on it and what was not.
Okay, I think, I think you're right. Is, I guess I've kept as good a record, Mark, you may have followed this record.
No, no.
Okay, starting in number one, strategic planning is still on mine. Number two is still there. Number three has been modified with the addition of bylaw review. Number four has had a line drawn through it. Number five is still there. And Paul's, number six, seven, eight, nine, and ten are still active.
No, ten, okay. I thought ten was combined to twenty-one, twenty-seven.
No, he said it was different.
Okay, no, all right.
Okay. On Mark's, the number 11 is there, number 12 is still there, number 13's been stricken, number 14 is there, number 15 is there. Okay, under Alex, number 16, excuse me, I got a note that says, "Update master plan," and it was between 15 and 16, so somebody may have to tell me why I put it there. On Alex, number 16's been dropped, 17's current, 18 is there, but except I put slash 20 years, and that was my own note, it wasn't brought on by the group.
Well, actually, here, just to Mark's point, this long-term cap plan is a joint capital planning commission.
Yeah.
That looks at all capital needs together.
Right, and I think the adjunct part of that would be the fact of that they look at a 20-year viewer, a 10-year viewer.
Right, yes, yes.
That's all gonna build-
Right, I mean, you'd be going out as far out as it exists.
19's intact, 20's intact, 21 has been, the addition of a charter review committee's been put on it?
Right.
Okay, and 21's been blanked through, 23's been blanked through, 24's current, 25 has had the addition of master plan.
Update master plan.
Update master plan. And Stevens, I've crossed through, because they are all echoed up in this already. They're already currently in, brought in. Okay, and the next step-
The only thing that's not been brought up was the quint truck.
Okay. I will, I will figure out where to put that.
Well, if it's not a select board goal, then it's not a select board goal.
Well, it already is a select board goal. The select board has made a goal to purchase the truck, it's been proven, and we're waiting for the fundraising, and Marie's got a letter going, so I think that process is going forward. We haven't had a briefing on it, but, I mean, yeah, the issue's already voted on. It's just a matter of getting the dominoes in effect to make it happen. And what did you say, Steven? We've got maybe a one-year window, and that's about it?
Well, we're gonna have to replace an engine either way in the next capital plan.
In the next capital plan, okay. Well, like, you know, being the fact, I can't, of course, I can't speak for everyone, being the fact that things have already been approved, being the fact you've already got a commitment coming in, it would seem to be, it may not be too difficult to get the additional commitment. And I think, Paul, you had even said something to the effect of, there's money there now, we could just go this year and say, "Okay, we're gonna do it."
Where's the money?
Check with Paul, he found the money.
Yeah, free cash.
Free cash.
Yeah, free cash, fine.
Okay, so, maybe we don't need the quint as an item on there then, because that issue should have been resolved.
But if you have it as a short-term goal, think how good you feel when you accomplish it in the short term.
Okay, I may slip it in someplace.
Well, I could slip it on number four.
Yeah, I can slip it, it's not major. Okay, so we in agreement, then I'll go ahead, and I'll rework this list, just like I said.
And do you want us to put action steps next to our points?
Yes, well, let me rework the list and get it out to you, and that'll pinpoint where the action steps may be required.
Okay.
Okay? And then what is the board? Would the board like just a little bit more of an explanation on what the author, what meant by this? Is that the consensus?
It seems like that's what we've been doing for, it's two and a half hours.
It is, it is, Alex.
So, the thing I'd like to get clarified, I know there's been this discussion about how we're gonna rank them, and I have no particular, you know, again, I'm not gonna try to fly-speak that. The thing that I'm not understanding, though, because I feel like I've heard two different things. One is, it's a goal if three people say it's a goal, and then two, we're gonna be weighting things. So, the way I think of one weighting, just to use it for illustration purposes, everybody could just rank them, one to whatever 19 it is. You add up the numbers, and whatever the lowest, or maybe you do it in reverse, you know, so you're, and you give the highest, and whatever has the highest scores. So you could even imagine something that was voted on by two people, being the number one, I mean, and it just seems like those are two different processes. So what exactly are we doing with the ranking, and then with the idea of three people have to agree on it being a goal?
Okay, the reason I said, the ranking, what you'll actually do, you compare each of these against each other. So if you say, Project A, is it more important than Project B, or less important? Is it more important than Project C, and D, and E? And you write down the end of the list, and you give points back and forth on which one is the most important. But it's all referencing, again, one, and then you go to the second one, and you go right to the entire same process again. And it's a domino effect that kind, you see it goes down on a curve. And basically, at the end of the row, you've got, you've got an analysis that you have rated all these projects against one another.
Alex, let me try to explain a little better, Alex.
Are you saying I explained it bad?
Yes, I am. It's called paired ranking, okay? So you're only comparing two projects. Project one versus project two, what's the most important?
At that moment.
At, today.
At that moment.
That's all you care about.
Okay.
In a vacuum. You decide it's project one, you put down one. Then you evaluate project one versus project three, in that moment. And you do that for every combination you have here. And in each combination, you're gonna have, one of the numbers wins, whether it's a one, or a two, or a five, or a nine, or whatever it is, which ones wins that, if you will, evaluation. At the end, some project is gonna have won the most number of paired comparisons. So therefore, the presumption is that it is the highest priority project. That's the way it works.
Should we just do that?
I believe that's the same thing I said, but-
Wait a minute, what, I'm not following.
You rank each project against everyone.
I get that, so, but let's say, so you've done one versus two, and then so on through 19, right? Then you still need to do two versus three.
And two versus-
Two versus, okay. So what I'm imagining is 19 times 19-
No.
Decisions.
Just half of that. Because you, one versus two is the same as two versus one.
Okay, all right, okay, good point. But still-
Correct.
That's 200, that's 200 decisions.
Right, exactly.
So, that seems a little tedious to me.
Except that, you're right on the outset, it looks like that, and the first time through, the first row through, which may be 19, is gonna be tedious. And then halfway through the second row, which is another 18, may get tedious. But after that, because you've discussed it, the process, believe it or not, comes out to, it really flows quickly. And in fact, and I would propose, that if, in fact, as a group, we went through the first row or two, and everybody understood it, everybody would go home, and in the course of an hour, just say, "'Cause I've heard all the discussions about it is, and I'll just put down the numbers I need to," and then it becomes a clerical job of, seriously, I mean, you don't need-
You realize number seven has no support, or is it?
Right, you don't need, you don't need a big discussion when it gets down to 11 versus 12, and 11 versus 15. We've already done 11 versus one, and two, and three, you know, so we've seen them. We've done 15 versus all those. We understand that, and it's gonna be your decision. We're gonna say, how many of us had 11 higher than 15 in that paired comparison? Three of us did it, and 11 goes in the box. Three of us had 15, and a 15 goes in the box.
But, I mean, what, I said I wasn't gonna do this, but now I feel compelled to make this suggestion. What if we just all went home, and we had 19? You'd like to, you'd like to, we go home, and then, we assign, your number one priority gets 19 points. Your number two priority gets 18, 17. Go through, and then, then whatever gets the most amount of points is the top priority, and so on.
Because there's no consensus in that process. It's five individuals-
But it is equally voting, weighting everybody's vote.
And I think, Mark, if you go through that process, you may get down to like, eight, and then you do the pairing valuation against eight versus 19. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, the problem is, it depends upon mathematical additions, and you end up with, somebody gives something a five, and somebody else gives it a 12, and it's the same thing as two people giving something, you know, an eight, and that's not, and it's not the same, because somebody feels very strongly about it being a five as a-
But that comes out in the debate.
No, you'll never see it. You'll never see it in the debate, because they both end up with the same number.
Is this really gonna take an hour to do?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, it'll take an hour.
I'm glad I had to do it.
But what, I swear, if, I'm thinking-
Seven may not have, 19, yes.
But if we go home and do it the way I said, then the next thing we do is, we actually start working on some of these specific points.
Alex, any system is a system, and any system works. The problem you get into is when you end up with a thing, you end up with two or three people saying, "That's not what," you know, you end up with a compromise and a mathematical consolidation, as opposed to a consensus. And if the objective of the board is to reach a mathematic, just come up with numbers, or projects based on a mathematical system, then let's use sticky notes, it's a lot faster and quicker.
So how do you, what's your definition of a consensus? Three people, or five?
A consensus is three.
And that's all that matters? If you rank it his way, sticky notes?
No, because if you rank it his way, you could end up with one person who gives something a one, and a bunch of other people give it a four, and it ends up, because that one-
I think that's your consensus.
Moves it up. No, one person can skew it. I mean, you know, we're gonna do it the way we're gonna do it. Richard, you're the-
You're the chair, we're going, we're going his way.
We've already had priority. But I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do what the board collectively wants done.
You should just tell us.
And we've got 19 items here. I can clean up the list, I should have it out by tomorrow. I should have it out tonight.
And when do you want us to have the pairings back to you by?
Well, I think, we're not gonna have another special meeting for our regular meeting, and we got a regular meeting coming up, and we can put, I imagine we can put an hour-time slot on our next meeting.
So you would like us to have the pairings to you by Thursday, so you can get it into the packet?
Can it be done that quick?
Sure.
Okay. Do you guys agree?
I, I, I mean, I guess I'd like, I don't, I'm against the pairings. I just, this, we, it's just too much time on pause.
Well, you could just throw your numbers down.
If you do it your way, 19 versus one, you've already done the pairings in your mind.
Yeah, in your mind, yeah.
And in our mind, 19 will always beat everything else, and 18 will beat everything else, and so, right? And 17 will beat everything else, right? That's the way you've got it.
Okay, I'm not sure, I'm not following, but-
Well, 19 is your, the one you ranked 19 is the most important project, in your opinion.
Well, well, no, I-
So it's more important than any of the others.
Right, right.
So if you compared it head-to-head with any others, it would come out ahead.
Right, that would be the point, yeah.